Six o'clock P M. So let's go ahead and get things started. Welcome everyone to the Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty five, special meeting of the Boulder City Council. Alicia, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and happy council meeting Thursday. We'll start tonight's roll call with Councilmember Adams.
Present.
Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Fulkers. She was here.
Uh, Lauren, I don't think we heard you. Uh, we can't hear you for some reason.
But she's here. All right. Marcus.
Present.
Shuhar.
Here.
Spear.
Present.
Wallack.
Here.
And Weiner.
Present.
Mayor, we have our quorum and noted that Councilmember, I mean Mayor Pro Tim Fulkert is present.
Very good. Thank you. All right. I would now like to request a motion to amend the agenda to add item six A, discussions on methods to improve open comment.
So moved.
Second.
That's a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your physical hand. I got eight. All right, and um, and then all not in favor. Okay, that's, sorry, Taysh, I didn't see your hand on either, either one of those. Did you wanna?
I didn't hear what the question was, so.
Uh, so this is the motion to amend the agenda to add item six A, discussion on methods to improve open comment.
Hmm, okay. I'll be an I, I'll be a yes on that.
Okay, thanks so much. That's a nine zero vote. So the motion passes and the agenda has been amended. Uh, can you go to the consent agenda, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir. Our consent agenda is item number two on tonight's agenda, and it consists of items two A through two K.
Any questions or comments from anyone about that? Uh, Ryan, and then we can raise our virtual hands, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Just briefly wanted to uh, say something about item uh, letter F, which is the uh, the one on traffic engineering. This will create a more human-centered definition of the concept and um, specify that land use is part of um, part of that domain. And I just wanted to thank uh, a lot of staff who worked on this uh, over the last year and really looking forward to um, getting this um, making this work. Thanks.
Thanks, Tina.
Yep, I just wanted to make a comment on J, which is the vacation of the easement to allow for the um, parking garage that's currently planned at seven hundred and fifty spaces across from Boulder High. Um, I know that sovereign um, sovereign from CU, uh, and I just sincerely hope that there is a lot of coordination with Boulder High when they add um, that parking garage there. And uh, if you're not aware of that layup on the cross the street is the parking lot for the athletic and the dirt lot for the athletic fields as well as the staff parking, which is next to that parking. Um, and it's just uh, I also just want to comment that it's, it's interesting that we're talking about parking minimums and how parking doesn't support some of our transportation modes and yet will be uh, tonight um, making a path forward to making one of the larger parking lots that we've approved since I've been on council. So um, you know, I think that we need to think about this partnership it with CU not just in terms of the programming, um, but also trying to coordinate some of our transportation goals. And uh, I hope, I hope that there's some consideration. Uh, there was some impact from the limelight onto the views from the football and playing fields for the students that are at Boulder High. And I hope that they consider minimizing the impact of the students of Builder High with this um, proposed parking garage. As you're aware, many of the buildings will be seven stories in that area. And I totally appreciate the need for housing, but I hope that they consider a design that um, does not lock in Boulder High with tall buildings. So, that's it.
Thanks, Tina. Mark.
Um, I, I want, I have a question relating to the uh, design of the thirtieth street project. Um, actually, a couple of questions. First, um.
Mark, I apologize for interrupting you, but that'll be next in our call up check-ins. So just finishing up the consent agenda here. So any other questions or comments on the consent agenda or perhaps a motion?
I'm over approval of the consent agenda.
Second, we have a motion and a second. Alicia, can you do a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our roll call for the consent agenda items two A through two K will start with Councilmember Marcus.
Uh, yes.
Shuhar.
Yes.
Spear.
Yes, sorry, hit the wrong button.
Wallack.
Hi.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tim Fulkers. All right. Thank you, ma'am. The consent agenda items two A through two K are hereby approved unanimously.
Thank you. Um, can you go now to the call up check-ins, please?
Yes, sir. Our call up check-ins, call up check-ins are item number three on tonight's agenda. Three A is the North Thirtieth Street Preliminary Design Project, Community Environmental Assessment Process, known as CEAP.
Good. So, Mark, this is your chance to ask questions about thirtieth street.
Okay, um, my first question is with respect to the calculation of additional time that it will take to traverse thirtieth street. How is that done?
I'll invite our friends in transportation to come on down. I see Valerie.
Good evening, members of council. Valerie Watson, interim director, Transportation and Mobility. I'm actually going to call on some of our fantastic project team who are here tonight. Um, ready to answer technical questions of this nature. Um, given you're asking about um, the travel times that were assessed in our CEAP. Um, I'm going to ask one of our consultants um, to explain um, the, the methodology by which um, those numbers were determined.
Yeah, sure. That's probably me. So I'm Chris, Chris Vogel saying with OB Consulting on the project team, and I'm a traffic engineer. And um, that's a, that's a great question. So I'll kind of start um, with the broad strokes. I can go as detailed as you'd like, uh, councilman. So, so the way we do that is um, we use a, a micro simulation, a traffic micro simulation program. So we start with collecting existing traffic data and collecting existing uh, conditions and characteristics of the corridor such as turn lanes, the, you know, signal timing characteristics, where traffic signals are, all that. So we can build a model that um, is calibrated to existing, right? So that's step one. We build a essentially a com- uh, computer model of reality, make sure it represents reality through that data check. Um, and then that consists of starting point. And then what we do is we modify things in that model such as, um, in this case, um, removing travel lanes in certain areas, um, changing the signal timing uh, assumptions because we have some special needs for signal timing related to bicycle and pedestrian safety and different things like that. So we make adjustments to those parts of the model. And then we run the model again, and the model is sort of a stochastic model where it takes multiple sort of computer runs of um, of the data. So not every run is exactly the same, right? So it'll run, we'll tell it how many, and in this case, say we run it ten times. And then that gives us ten answers that are sort of in a, a group. And then we look at those answers and come up with, you know, i- it tells us what the um, what that data tells us in terms of statistically, what the average is, what the max is, what a ninety-fifth percentile time is and those sort of things, right? And, and what we did here um, with the times that you saw is we used that, that multiple runs approach of the uh, proposed conditions and then used the maximum travel time increases as a um, as a start point. I think you would have seen that presented. There was probably like, we saw average and then maximum. Um, and that's how that's calculated. So um, so that's the process and I can, I can go deeper. Um, if you'd like, or if you had specific questions, maybe you're coming from a certain uh, viewpoint that I didn't address.
No, I, I, my interest is that your models are, are not based on actual traffic performance. They're based on the theory of the model.
Is that not? That is true for, for future, right? So the, the existing, so the the calibrated model is what we call it. We do check the existing conditions in the corridor versus the model predictions of what they should be for existing, and we can check those against each other, right? And then we can see if the model is predicting reality as it exists today accurately. And then in the future, you're correct, the model uses those, those um, algorithms to predict future performance.
Uh, uh, I'm sure you've done this on other streets and either in Boulder or elsewhere. Um, what's the sort of percentage divergence of uh, predicted performance from actual performance in terms of, of uh, traffic times?
Yeah, so I, I think what um, if I could restate, you tell me if I understand properly. So I think what you're saying is if we take capacity away, will people choose different routes? And how do we sort of figure that out? Is that what you're asking?
I, I'm asking if the projection is uh, a minute forty seconds additional travel time here. In other cases where you have done this analysis, to what extent have actual conditions diverged from the projection?
I see what you're, I see what you're asking. So you're kind of getting at how much do we believe the answers, right? And have we truthed those answers against outcomes in, in other places? Um, right. So, so that is also a great question. Um, generally, uh, so I would say we, we haven't uh, in, as an industry or specifically done a lot of follow-up on us as the consultants, the model developers. So the, there's a, in this case, we used a model developed by a company called TransCAD. That's called TransModeler. Um, you guys used it for an arterial um, arterial assessment project, the city of Boulder and citywide, and that was a good starting point for us. They've done those kind of follow-up studies to see if the model is predicting properly. Um, we have not as consultants. Often what happens is we do the project and then we have recommendations and then conditions change all the time, right, councilman? So so like you might have different development than you thought, the land use, transportation mix, like and all that stuff. So what I can tell you is um, based on, on this model and the changes we made and um, not assuming, so I, I will also say we didn't assume any diversion of traffic.
So Chris, I apologize for interrupting you, but we've got a long thing tonight, so you might cut.
Oh, sure.
So um, just has, has there been truth testing and, and maybe yes or no?
Okay, so I would say uh, based on that question, I would say that um, yes, the model developers have done that. Have we done that in Boulder or, or a specific thing? No. Does that, does that help? Okay.
Okay, and Mark, if I, if I can just check in, because we do have a, we do have a long evening tonight. Um, just a question, you might look, think about questions that are relevant to your decision about whether to call the project up this evening.
And, and just one more short question. Um, do I correctly understand that we secure financing for this project?
So um, councilmember was the, I, you cut out for a second, the question, um, have we secured financing for the project?
Yes.
Um, we have secured um, grant, federal grant funding for this project. Yes.
Seize the money or uh, is it one of those subject to cancellation at the whim of, of the administration?
It is undetermined at this time, um, uh, when we will be able to move forward with um, the, the funds.
Okay, thank you.
Right? I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so I would ask if anybody has any desire to call this up. Go ahead. Okay, Mark, I got a one hand raised for Mark. Mark, do you want to make a motion to that effect?
No, there's no point.
So it looks like uh, no interest in calling this up. Uh, Valerie, thanks for being here. And I just do wanted to say I thought staff did a remarkable job in creating that hybrid alternative. I thought that was very creative, what you all put together. I thought really phenomenal work by city staff on that. All right, uh, Alicia, can we move to three B, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Three B is the consideration of a water and wastewater service agreement between the city of Boulder and the University of Colorado at Boulder for the North Boulder Creek campus.
Questions or comments or desire to call this one up? Not seeing any hands raised. So that will be a no. Uh, so if we can go to three C, please.
Yes, sir. Three C is the consideration of a concept plan review and comment request for a proposed redevelopment at twenty-nine fifty-five, twenty-nine sixty-nine, and twenty-nine ninety-five baseline road and seven thirty-five through seven thirty, sev- I'm sorry, seven thirty-five through seven seventy-five South Street as two four-to-five-story multifamily student housing buildings with a total of a hundred units. This is reviewed under case number L U R twenty-twenty-five dash zero 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 one two.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or desire to call this one up? I see a hand raised, Lauren.
I just had a comment.
And, and we can hear you now, so that's good.
Yes, that's so exciting. Um, so I just wanted to commend the design and development team on this. I thought especially for concept plan, it was a really detailed um, and well thought through level, higher level of design than we typically see at this stage. Um, and I appreciated the facades a lot. Um, and they're breaking down the scale through the recesses and extrusions and kind of the pattern that that created. Um, I was kind of, I, the only thing that popped up for me was at the corner of thirtieth and baseline. That corner of the building, you have fairly monotonous facades in both directions. And I might recommend the design team that, you know, to have a better pattern and break down the scale, it might be nice to change material a little bit around that corner in a way different than what they currently have done.
Thanks for that. And uh, I thought planning board had some really good comments on this concept plan as well. Anything else? Seeing none, that'll finish out our call check-in. So can we go to our first public hearing, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Our public hearings are item number four on tonight's agenda. Four A is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt ordinance eighty-seven oh three designating the property at thirty-three seventy-five sixteenth street, city of Boulder, Colorado, to be known as the Orchard House as an individual landmark under chapter nine dash eleven historic preservation B R C nineteen eighty-one and setting for related details.
And with this, council will go straight to Marcy Gerwin, who does such a great job uh, at these uh, landmark items.
Well, thank you and good evening, um, council members. It looks like I need permission to share my screen just real quick. There we go. And here we are. Okay, so good evening. I am Marcy Gerwin, uh, principal planner in Planning and Development Services. I'll begin this presentation with the quasi judicial process. First, council members will note any ex parte contacts, conversations about this uh, application or site visits, which you can do now. Wait a couple of seconds. Uh, we'll then go into the staff presentation, followed by any questions that council may have. Uh, the applicant and homeowners will then uh, speak to council, followed by council questions. And the public hearing is then opened for community member comments, uh, followed by council questions again. After the last public comment speaker, the applicant has the opportunity to respond to anything that was said. Uh, the public's uh, comment period is then closed, and council then discusses the decision. A motion requires at least uh, five members to pass, and motions must state findings, conclusions, and a recommendation. Finally, a record of the hearing is kept by staff. As part of the quasi judicial process, the criteria for your decision this evening is found in nine eleven six of the Boulder Revised Code. And that's focused on whether the designation meets the purposes and standards found in nine eleven one eight and nine eleven two of the Boulder Revised Code in balance with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Looking at those two code sections, the first defines the purpose of the Historic Preservation Code, which is to preserve, protect, and enhance historically significant buildings and areas of the city reminiscent of past eras, events, or people. And to develop and maintain appropriate settings to enhance property values, stabilize neighborhoods, promote tourist trade and interest, and foster knowledge of the city's living heritage. The second provides the type of designations council may pass, including individual landmarks on a single site containing special character in historical, architectural, or aesthetic interest or value. And the third part of your decision is whether the designation is in balance with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, which sets a vision for future development and preservation in the city of Boulder and Boulder County. These comp plan policies are relevant to the application, which includes protecting sites with cultural or architectural value, encouraging new designations, and working to support historic places so they continue to contribute to the economic vitality of the community and foster meaningful connections to Boulder. The options in front of you this evening are to approve the designation, modify and approve the designation, or deny the designation. If designated, the property will become Boulder's two-hundred-and-twenty-first individual landmark. And future exterior changes will be reviewed through a landmark alteration certificate. Owners will receive a bronze plaque and be eligible for historic preservation state tax credits. Uh, looking back at the application process, this application came in at the end of last year, and a landmark alteration certificate was issued to construct a rear addition. On May seventh, the landmarks board unanimously voted to recommend designation of the property, and first reading was on your June fifth uh, consent agenda. So this property at thirty-three seventy-five sixteenth street is located on the southwest corner of sixteenth and Iris in Old North Boulder, also known as the West Hawthorne neighborhood. The house faces east onto sixteenth street, and there are no accessory buildings on the property. It is not located within a potential or designated historic district. The building is a one-and-a-half-story craftsman bungalow with classic side gable roof and exposed rafter tails. The facade includes a full width porch recessed under the main roof with a low shed roof dormer clad in painted wood shingle above the porch. The porch with its substantial square porch posts and wood decking and front dormer are character-defining features of the house. Other character-defining features include the tapered window and door surrounds, brackets, and the combination of wood shingle and narrow horizontal siding. The surrounds, including multiple mature trees on the property, gravel drive, and uh, rural feel of the property also contribute to its character. This house has had only five owners since it was built a hundred and twenty-eight years ago. Roland Dickens Sheets likely commissioned the house but never lived there. We believe that these are three of his children on the picture on the left. And George and Mary Minx bought the house in nineteen eighteen. The Minx were longtime residents of Superior where they were fruit farmers in the eighteen seventies. They semi-retired and lived in this house for about a decade, and then the Warren family bought the house in nineteen twenty-nine. James Warren was a successful miner in Boulder County, and his wife Pearl raised their three children here. Members of the Warren family lived in the house for seventy-four years, although they sold most of their surrounding land after the death of James in nineteen sixty-five. The yellow square uh, marks the area with that the Minx family acquired the Warren uh, and the Warren family purchased within Parsons Park. Parsons Park was planted in nineteen oh seven by a fellow named Charles Parsons. He owned most of the surrounding area and had orchards throughout the development. And Jesse D. and Cora Gertrude Curtis Long purchased the lot south of Hawthorne in nineteen sixteen. This is still a thriving farm widely known as Long's Gardens. J D Long's good friend and business partner, Roland Dickens Sheets, purchased half a block in the north. J D Long's good friend and business partner, Roland Dickens Sheets, purchased half a block in the northeast corner of Parsons Park. And the house up for your consideration tonight was one of the first to be built within Parsons Park. The property remained undeveloped in a significant part of the area until the property was uh subdivided and developed in the nineteen seventies. The property is also eligible for designation based on its architectural significance. The bungalow form was popular in Colorado from around nineteen hundred to the nineteen thirties, due to its simplicity and utility. Characteristic elements of this form include the gently pitched side gable roof, overhanging eaves, broad front porch supports. And the central shed roof dormer, as well as the exposed rafter ends. We don't know who the architect or builder were, but suspect it might be a kit house based on the date of construction and design. As for the environmental significance, the house was constructed as the farmhouse for a larger area of a truck garden. The site still includes mature trees and a gravel driveway that reflect the historic rural characteristics of the site. Although the larger area was subdivided in the nineteen seventies, the corner lot retains some of its landscaping and rural feel from the earlier period. The massing and scale of the house and the property's mature vegetation is compatible for its residential setting. And the house is a familiar visual landmark within the neighborhood and a vestige uh when this area was mainly orchards. Staff in the Landmarks Board recommend that the house be named the Orchard House for its agricultural history. And that the boundary be established to follow the property lines of the lot, which are consistent with current and past practices. Of the National Register Guidelines for Establishing Boundaries. Uh the boundary and the name are both supported by the property owners. So with that, staff in the Landmarks Board recommend the city council. Adopt the ordinance and designate the property at thirty-three seventy-five sixteenth street. As an individual landmark to be known as the Orchard House. Thank you, and I'd like to acknowledge that the owners, Michael and Sidra Bernstein, are here. And on a personal note, it was just a real pleasure to work with them and um welcome their young children to our Landmarks Board. Hearing and and know that these children would be the next generation in this historic house. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks so much for that, Marcy, that was a great and illuminating presentation. Does anyone have any questions for Marcy about this? And maybe we can take the presentation down and maybe just if the motion language could be pasted in the chat, that would be helpful, and if not, we can find it somewhere else. Hey, I'm not seeing um any questions. And um I, we already heard that the um owners are present, so thank you for being here and joining us for submitting this application. So we can now go to the public hearing. Um Alicia, can you read our rules? For public engagement, please.
Alright, sir, let me get all my buttons and presentations up. Alright, thank you everyone for joining us, I will now go over the Public Participation and City Council Meeting Guidance. The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council. As well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes. We ask that you please visit our website at boldercolorado dot gov slash services slash productive dash atmospheres. And the Boulder Revised Code, section sixteen B. The city will enforce the rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code, section sixteen B, including. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. No attendee shall disrupt, disturb, or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of any council meeting in a manner that obstructs the business of the meeting. This also includes failing to obey any lawful order of the presiding officer to leave the meeting room or refrain from addressing the council. Our remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. And lastly, obscenity, other epithets based on race, gender, or religion, and other speech and behavior. That will disrupt or otherwise impede the meeting will not be tolerated. Thank you for listening, and again, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for that, Alicia, we have one person signed up to speak, so Lynn Siegel, you get three minutes. And just a reminder to please uh keep your comments to the ordinance in front of us for consideration at this public hearing.
Mayor, I do not see Lynn online right now.
In that case, I will close the public hearing. And bring it back to council for deliberations or perhaps a motion. Here is motion language in the chat.
I move that we adopt ordinance eighty-seven, eight-seven zero three, designating the property at thirty-third seventy-fifth. Sixteenth Street. City of Boulder, Colorado, to be known as the Orchard House as an individual landmark under the city of Boulder's historic preservation ordinance. And setting forth related details.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second, uh Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
We can't hear.
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call for the adoption of ordinance eighty-seven oh three with council member Shubart.
Sorry, yes.
Spear.
Yes.
Wally.
Hi.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Tysha.
Yes, yes, I am, yes.
Thank you. Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Rocket.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fulkers.
Yes.
And Markwiz.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-seven oh three is hereby adopted unanimously.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, everyone, thanks again to the um the owners and thanks to Marcy for ushering this through the system, really appreciate all of your amazing work. And with that, can we go to our second public hearing item, please, Alicia?
Yes, sir, thank you. Item four B on tonight's agenda is the second reading and consideration of a motion to adopt the following two ordinances. First, we have ordinance eighty-seven hundred, which is amending section two dash two dash fifteen. Neighborhood permit parking zones and chapter four dash twenty-three neighborhood zone. Neighborhood parking zone permits to update standards for on-street parking management. Our second ordinance for adoption is ordinance eighty-six ninety-six, which is amending. Title nine land use code, B R C nineteen eighty-one, to modify off-street parking requirements. And amending chapter two of the city of Boulder Design and Construction Standards. Originally adopted pursuant to ordinance fifty-nine eighty-six to modify standards for motor vehicles and bicycle parking.
Uh as you'll see, uh council, in a moment, this is an item that has been uh. A long time coming and has been worked on for many, many years and has been a huge cross-departmental effort. Uh and with that, I will pass it on to our Director of Planning and Development Services, who I hear lost an arm wrestling match to go first. Uh so Brad, take it away.
That is correct, uh good evening, council, it's good to see you uh this evening. Uh I am Brad Mueller, Director of Planning and Development Services, and as Nurya noted. Uh we are very excited to bring this to you um after what is now eleven years. Of work in various forms um on a, an important topic that really touches on so very many different policy. Uh items that are a legacy of Boulder and and uh certainly a goal of council to advance. Uh more than we really will have time to touch on in our presentation tonight, but really. Uh really speaks to and advances many, many different goals um the city has held. Uh as Nury also mentioned, very much a cross-departmental, which is a great opportunity and also a testament to the fact that. Many of our complex problems in the city um do require all the greatest minds of multiple disciplines and departments to work on that. Uh this one in particular, uh my colleague Valerie and and the Transportation Mobility and and that whole team. And certainly the City Attorney's Office as well. Uh we are bringing you two legs of the three-legged stool, uh we've talked about several times with you in in preparing for this evening. Uh the parking uh minimums and then also the curbside management. Uh the T D M, which we'll also talk about this evening, proved to be uh complex in its innovation and also just frankly. Uh kind of is pushing the limits of staff workloads in in all of the departments, but we will be back. And look forward to bringing that to you in the late summer, early fall um to bring forward as well. Uh the two items tonight are are great in their own right, um and also as a. Matter of course, help advance uh a state deadline for the parking minimums. Element in particular, so with that. I'm going to uh turn it over to Lisa Hood, who is a principal planner with the department and the lead on this project. We appreciate her work, so here is Lisa.
Thank you, Brad, good evening, council. As Brad said, my name's Lisa Hood, I'm a principal planner with Planning and Development Services. I'm joined by my team, Chris Haglen from Transportation Mobility and Samantha Bromberg from Community Vitality. We are really excited to bring the Access Management AMPS project to you tonight. Um I know we've talked to you several times about this project before, but we're um so enthusiastic about bringing these two ordinances. Um to your attention tonight. And you've seen this triangle graphic before, Brad did a great job introducing this. But we've been reviewing all three of these topics that align with each of the departments. Um over the last year, year and a half, all together holistically. Because all of them revolve around access and parking through the city, and so they are all very intrinsically intertwined. Tonight, you'll have ordinance eighty-seven hundred related to on-street parking management strategies. And ordinance eighty-six ninety-six related to the off-street parking standards that you'll be reviewing. And then, as Brad said, there's another ordinance forthcoming, the final leg of the stool. Which you'll see in just a couple of months related to transportation demand management or T D M. I know you all have heard this many times, but if there's anybody um listening or watching the video. Um who uh hasn't heard this before, just to clarify some of those terms. When we talk about off-street parking, so ordinance eighty-six ninety-six, we're talking about the parking requirements on private property. Those are usually through zoning. When we talk about on-street parking, it's just that, the parking that's on the street, the public right-of-way. And when we talk about travel or transportation demand management, we're talking about all of the different strategies and methods. That are used to efficiently get people around in our communities, so whether that's walking, or biking, or driving, or transit. As Brad also mentioned, this project's been going on for a very long time, we are on year eleven, the third phase of the project. There's been kind of starts and stops due to COVID with this third final phase. Um but we are aiming for completion of the on-street and off-street part of the project by June thirtieth. Which I'll explain more related to the state bill, um and then the T D M ordinance will come shortly afterwards. We've worked with you over many different meetings to refine the project scope. The original scope of phase three was to implement the final outstanding recommendations of the twenty-seventeen AMPS report that was adopted by council back then. There are only two remaining items that we have, the city has not completed yet from that report. The first is updating our off-street parking standards and the second is the T D M plan ordinance for new developments. As we've been uh restarted, phase three, we've added a few more things into the scope. The first was in reaction to the state legislation that was passed last year related to minimum parking requirements. Once that happened, we wanted to make sure that we were bringing the on-street parking management side of things into the fold. So that we really could look holistically at all of these different aspects related to access and parking in Boulder. Also, through the many meetings with council, planning board, and transportation advisory board over the last year. We've heard a lot of interest in the bicycle parking standards, specifically um some topics of interest related to design standards. So since we were in the same section of the land use code, um we have included some design standards. But I will note that wasn't part of the original scope of the project. In terms of applicability, like any land use code change, um these changes will apply. If they're adopted to new development and redevelopment, so that means they don't apply retroactively. Um unless somebody is, or they don't apply unless there is some kind of action being requested from the city, like a building permit. Or license or things like that. I've mentioned, we've received a lot of really helpful direction and guidance from council, our transportation advisory board. And planning board over the last year with many different check-ins to guide and refine the scope. And then over the last month, we've also been at Transportation Advisory Board and Planning Board for public hearings and their recommendations. In terms of general public engagement, we really focused on mostly a consult level of engagement. But because there are aspects that are mandated through the state, um some portions have been more on the informed side of things. We've had notifications in the Planning and Development Services newsletter. Um frequently throughout the year, we have a detailed Be Heard Boulder page and city webpage. And uh staff held several stakeholder meetings with bike advocates in the community like Community Cycles and Bike Boulder to help inform those bike parking design. Standard changes. We focused our engagement on uh what we called community consultations, um which were several different community meetings, both in September. Of last year where we talked about parking and housing with residents of affordable housing communities. And then our big focus, public engagement window was in March of this year. Where we had meetings with the Boulder Chamber, the um neighborhood and community leaders, our community connectors and residents. Um residents of our affordable housing communities and other underrepresented groups. As well as kind of our frequent applicants or technical experts um that um apply for building permits or land use approvals frequently. I mentioned we went to Transportation Advisory Board for a public hearing on May twelfth. They did recommend approval of both ordinance eighty-seven hundred and eighty-six ninety-six. And wanted staff to consider comments that the TAB members made in their meeting and the comments that had been submitted from Community Cycles. They also wanted to note their support for supporting a future work plan item, a different project. Where we could do a bike parking utilization study throughout the city, similar to what we did for motive vehicle parking, which I'll talk about later. We also went to Planning Board on May twentieth, it actually took two meetings. Um we had a public hearing, the public hearing on May twentieth where we talked about off-street and on-street parking. And then the T D M discussion was the following week um to give feedback on that part. Planning Board did unanimously recommend approval of the ordinances. Um they did make eighteen additional motions. The vast majority of those were related to bike parking and I'll get into those as we get further into that topic. Um we have incorporated many of the changes that they recommended based on the motions. So the way we'll do this presentation is similar to how we've done it um in the past for you. I will talk about off-street parking standards, Sam will talk about on-street parking management strategies, and then Chris will follow up with T D M. Again, Sam and I, we have the ordinances that are for your consideration tonight, and then Chris's portion is more for feedback to um. Further refine that ordinance that's still under development. So some of this is gonna seem familiar to you because you've heard me say it many times, but again, for others who might have not heard this before. Some background on the off-street parking standards. We have had parking requirements in our zoning code since nineteen fifty-four. Almost every community in the country um has some kind of parking standards or incorporated some kind of parking standards after World War Two. They've had a very significant influence on urban forum and development of our community and communities across the country. As well as the mobility options of residents of those communities. In almost all of these communities, it follows a similar formula where there is a requirement of a number of parking spaces. Per square foot of a different kind of land use, so there's some examples of how that works in Boulder. Because it's not a perfect science, we do have some levers for flexibility, um namely our parking reduction process. And in doing this process, this project, we looked back over the last fifteen years or so. At our major development projects and almost half of those major development projects did include a parking reduction to reduce that requirement. Uh parking reform has been a major topic in planning and zoning over the last decade or so, especially after twenty seventeen when Buffalo. New York was the first major city in the United States to eliminate minimum parking requirements citywide. Since then, almost eighty cities have eliminated all of their minimum parking requirements. And almost a thousand have reduced their minimum, their minimum parking requirements. States have also been taking note of this um with many states passing legislation in recent years. And that includes Colorado, so that's where we get to the state bill that I mentioned, House Bill twenty-four thirteen oh four was passed last year. And what it does is prohibit jurisdictions like Boulder from having those minimum parking requirements. For properties that are located within the transit service area, so those are the blue areas. For properties that are located within the transit service area. So those are the blue areas, as you can see on the map on Boulder. Um, it only applies to certain land uses, so it's only to multifamily residential or for mixed use that includes residential. Um, but as we've talked about before in previous meetings, as staff went back. And analyzed the impact of the bill, we saw that we we Boulder has a lot that qualifies as transit service area, so. Uh, over three quarters of the city would fall into that transit service area. And the direction we've gotten repeatedly from council, planning board and transportation advisory board throughout this project. Is to consider um expanding that to apply citywide and to all land uses, not just multifamily. For the state bill though, compliance for those particular items is required by June thirtieth, which is Monday. Um, so this is very timely and um just a reminder that the the rationale that the state passed. In the bill for why um why they passed the bill was that. Uh, several studies have found that local minimum parking requirements increase vehicle miles traveled. Greenhouse gas emissions and also increased development and housing costs. I've talked about this in detail before, so I'll just quickly go through this. But because the AMPS project has been taking place over the last eleven years, we've had the opportunity. To do lots of parking supply and utilization data collection. So we've looked at over sixteen thousand parking spaces at different points in time over the last decade. To understand how much our existing parking is actually being used. And time and time again, we come to the same conclusion, which is that we have more parking available than is actually being utilized. Now this differs based on different land uses. Some are more highly utilized than others. You might be thinking of certain, certain parking lots might be higher utilized than others, but on average. We do have significantly more parking um than is being used. This time around, we also looked at some of those larger development projects that have had parking reduction, so. Um, they built less parking than even the code required. And what we found is even those are not fully utilizing the parking that they've built. So a quick summary of what's in a very long ordinance. Um, is the main thing is eliminating the minimum parking, off-street parking requirements citywide for all land uses. So going beyond what the state bill requirement um is by Monday, but applying it to all land uses throughout the city. And in the last seventy four years or or seventy-one years of having zoning um include parking. Uh, that means that parking is intricately intertwined into many parts of our land use code. And so there are lots of accompanying code updates that needed to be made, which is why the ordinance is so long. Just references to parking and required parking and all the parking reduction processes and things like that. Um, the ordinance also includes some of the topics that we've talked about in previous meetings, so. Incentivizing shared parking, so making sure that the existing parking that we do have is being efficiently utilized. Um, so we've made some changes in the ordinance that better allow for that and facilitate the sharing of parking. We've talked before about EV charging. Um, we've updated a small update in the energy conservation code. To reference the EV spaces to ensure that we're still getting electric vehicle charging spaces based on the spaces. Overall parking spaces that are required rather than it being based on. Or that are provided rather than what is based on required, which is what it previously said. And then finally, the bike parking standards, um, we have updates that improve the security and usability. I'll go a little bit more into detail on bike parking because it was such a big topic of conversation. With planning board and transportation advisory board, um, just so you understand the changes that are in there. So the first change is that we've added a new requirement that five percent of spaces. Be larger sized, so those are for larger sized bikes like cargo bikes. And that kicks in wherever ten spaces are required or more. We've also added a limit for vertical or tiered racks that there's images, for examples. Um, where those can only be a maximum of twenty-five percent of required spaces. And they have to have a mechanically assisted lifting lifting mechanism to help people get their bikes up there. We've also added a um requirement that where there's a hundred bike parking spaces required. At least five percent of those need to have um the ability to be charged, location near an outlet so that e-bikes can be charged. And then through those stakeholder meetings that I've mentioned, we worked a lot on um increasing our emphasis on security. Of bike parking, so we've added language about tamper tamper resistant anchors, heavy duty locks, transparency, surveillance, illumination. All really trying to get towards crime prevention through environmental design principles and just further strengthen those standards we already had. We also added standards related to improving wayfinding so that folks are able to find the bike parking that exists. Um, just to highlight those planning board and TAB changes, so based on the motions that planning board made and the recommendations of TAB. Um, we did add some specific standards for schools. That's just um related to the distance that the bike parking has to be from the entrance. And not using those vertical or tiered racks for elementary or middle schools. Um, planning board actually reduced that maximum for vertical and tiered racks. Based on um from what staff had originally originally recommended, so they reduced it down to twenty-five percent. And we've made that change in the ordinance. We've added required signage for those larger spaces as well as modified the the number of larger spaces. That are required and exempted detached dwelling units that don't have a private garage from those long-term standards. There are a couple of changes that um planning board had recommended that we didn't make. Um, or that we did not ultimately put into the ordinance. They had several recommendations for future work plan items, like the bike parking utilization study. That um TAB had also recommended, as well as looking into vehicle dimensional standards. Um, and a few other uh monitoring items related to these changes. Um, as well as they noted a desire to exempt bike parking from floor area ratio. Um, we didn't get to this in the meeting, but uh it actually was a change we had recently made. In the zoning for affordable housing project, so that one had already, that box had already been checked, so. There was no change to be made for the the ordinance tonight, so. With that, I will close um my section and I will pass it over to Sam, who will talk about on-street parking management strategies.
Thanks, Lisa. Good evening, members of council, Samantha Bromberg, Senior Project Manager, Community Vitality. Here to talk about on-street parking management strategies. To better manage on-street parking as a city grows and transportation patterns evolve, Boulder is planning to update the neighborhood permit parking or NPP program. The goal is to expand NPP availability to all neighborhoods, not just low-density areas. And to introduce new tools to the residential access management program or RAMP. These updates will help us more effectively address potential parking impacts from new development and redevelopment projects. In light of the potential elimination of parking minimums. Next slide, please. Based on our research and what we heard from the community, we're proposing to reduce the residential permit allocations from two to one per licensed driver. Engagement showed that most NPP households own about as many vehicles as they have licensed drivers, so for many of this change will have little impact. Permit data also suggests this shift could reduce the total number of permits issued by about fifteen percent. The proposal supports one of the key goals of the project, which is to encourage better use of off-street parking and reduce the number of vehicles stored long-term on public streets. For households without off-street parking who still need more permits, there is a backup option, flex permits, which I'll get to shortly. To help manage demand in higher density areas, we are also recommending giving the city manager the authority to cap total residential permits in a zone. When we're going through the public zone creation process to ensure that we aren't able to issue more permits than there are available curbside spaces. Um, in addition, we heard clearly from the community that the current guest and visitor permit system is confusing and underutilized. A lot of folks said it's hard to understand the difference between guests and visitor permits and what rules apply to each. Um, we do have data that backs that up. Most people only use guest permits a few times a month or not at all, and visitor permits even less. To simplify things, we're proposing to replace both with two new streamlined options. Day passes um is one and flex flex permits is the other. So with day passes, households will get twenty-five per year. Each one is good for twenty-four hours and can be used one at a time or back-to-back across different days and vehicles. Based on feedback received from residents, twenty-five should cover the needs of most households for the year. With flex permits, they'll be valid for an entire year and are meant for long-term guests, extra household vehicles or regular visitors like caretakers or service providers. They'll be priced the same as regular residential permits to reflect their higher value and higher use of curbside space. The new setup is designed to be simpler, more flexible and to better match actual usage. Uh, while also discouraging misuse of those permits. Next slide, please. To stay ahead of parking issues that can come with big new developments or redevelopment projects, we're proposing a new process. Whenever a traffic assessment is required, based on Boulder's design and construction standards, Community Vitality will conduct a parking review. The review, which is a separate from the development review process, will look at parking occupancy. How many trips the project is likely to generate and how easy it is to get around by other modes like biking, walking or transit. The information will help us decide whether to proactively propose a new NPP zone, adjust an existing one or remove a zone if it's no longer needed. Next slide. To help with school access and ease congestion, staff is recommending that the city manager be given the authority to create park and walk zones and NPPs near schools. In these zones, people could park twice a day for one hour each, making it easier to handle both drop-offs and pickups plus school events. Rather than just one longer parking session as our current rules allow for. This change will give the city permission to implement the program and once this has been granted, staff can work with BVSD. To determine our approach to implementation. Next slide. Based on feedback from city council, staff is proposing a pilot program in the Gosgrove neighborhood. The pilot will switch from time-limited parking to mobile pay-only paid parking for people without permits. And provide free eco-passes to all residents of Gosgrove. Gosgrove was chosen because it scores high on parking demand, transit access and housing density. This pilot is going to help us find out two things. First, can paid parking revenue cover the cost of giving residents free eco-passes? And second, how does switching to paid parking change parking demand and behavior on the street? The paid parking will be managed through Park Mobile and will track transit usage to see the overall effects. The goal is to reduce reliance on cars, improve parking management and see if paid parking can support our transportation demand management efforts in the long run. Next slide, please. Thanks. Uh, staff completed a financial analysis to make sure the proposed changes keep ramp financially sustainable. The analysis looked at removing underperforming NPP zones, which was Rebecca, rec, sorry, recommended in the twenty twenty-four ramp report. Limiting how many permits are issued. Replacing guest and visitor permits with day passes and flex permits. Adding paid parking and offering eco-passes to residents at no cost. The table on the slide shows the analysis for all these proposed changes, except for the pilot program, which was included in the memo. And the pilot program is also expected to maintain cost recovery. Overall, the program should stay financially stable with these changes. That said, if eco-passes were to be offered in all NPP zones without revenue from paid parking. Permit fees would have to double to maintain cost recovery of the program. As you can see, off-street and on-street parking are intricately intertwined. As we evolve our approach to parking regulation in the city. The third important part for you to consider when thinking of parking in access in Boulder is transportation demand management or TDM. Ordinance eighty seven hundred and eighty six ninety six are before you tonight for your consideration to modify on and off-street parking. As well as the mentioned TDM ordinance is currently under development, but will come to council in just a few months. I will now pass it off to Chris to go over the significant work that has already been done on this topic.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, Chris Haglin here, uh, Principal Project Manager and Transportation Mobility. Here to discuss the TDM ordinance for new developments, which staff is currently working on. And will be bringing to boards and council in August and September respectively. Next slide, please. Under our current process, TDM plans are tied to site review and often connected to a request for parking reductions. Plans focus on what infrastructure and amenities can be provided by a developer. And uses a customized approach for the TDM programs and services for each project. Often plans include a three to five-year financial guarantee that are held by the city and then used to cover the cost of. That three to five years of eco-pass participation. Issues with the current process have been identified. Many stem from the fact that most TDM programs and services. Can only be implemented by tenants and not necessarily by developers. At the time of site review, occupation is sometimes years away. And the future tenants are unknown, which makes it difficult to design an effective TDM plan. Without a comprehensive ordinance that clearly defines trip reduction goals. Or dictates a process to monitor compliance, there are limitations to the clarity and effectiveness of the current process. Next slide, please. Staff was asked to develop the new ordinance to address these issues. The purpose of this new ordinance is to mitigate the impacts of new development. On our surrounding transportation system, adjacent properties and neighborhoods. Also to enhance our multimodal access and TDM programs. And ultimately contribute to the city goals by changing travel behavior. Some of the key factors we use in determining our approach are that. Developers can provide infrastructure amenities, TDM programs are implemented by the tenants. And that most of the uh most impactful TDM programs, services and policies have annual costs. Next slide, please. So when designing our ordinance, uh, we based and based on those key factors. Staff has identified many different policy dials that can be turned up or down. Uh, within the ordinance, uh, providing some significant flexibility of the design and implementation. For example, the ordinance could apply to all developments or it could be limited based on size, type or impact. Uh, we can be very prescriptive uh in which TDM programs or services are required. Or we could be even be more agnostic to how vehicle trips are reduced, just as long as trips are met. Or trip targets are met. Uh, as said, the vast majority of TDM programs have annual costs. And there are a li- limited number of entities who can pay those costs. Primarily, we see the developers or owners or the tenants themselves. The amount of uh the amount paid by the developer owner could also be dialed up or down. Uh, either to cover the full cost of implementing a TDM program. Just covering the hard costs, things like eco-pass or B-cycle memberships. Or reduced to a level where those uh funds simply subsidize what the tenants are required to implement. And finally, those requirements can also change in terms of the duration. Uh, this could be an ongoing uh requirement or we could have it limited in the number of years. Uh, as we typically have now with three to five years, but we could extend that. Next slide, please. Based on the input we've received, uh, staff's approach is that this ordinance would apply to all projects, including by right. Uh, site review and form-based code, uh, that meet size and thresholds of a tiered approach. Since the most effective TDM programs have those annual costs. The approach would be used to extend our current financial guarantee model. To ensure that funding is available to implement the TDM programs once tenants are occupying the building. In this approach, the developers or the property owners pay those annual financial guarantees which are held by the city. Uh, once tenants occupy the buildings, final TDM plans can be designed and approved by staff. And then implemented by the employer tenants or residential property managers. Uh, using the funds provided by uh the owners. Owners have clarity on the level of funding that they have to provide. But there's still flexibility in how those funds can be used based on the tenant's, either employee or resident needs or travel demand. For developments that meet requirements of the duration, frequency of monitoring is limited. But those properties out of compliance, there's ongoing adjustments made uh to those funding levels until the targets are met. Next slide, please. In the previous discussion with boards and councils, they supported a tiered approach. Uh, to ensure that the focus is on our largest and most impactful developments. And that we manage staffing needs required to manage this type of ordinance program. Uh, following additional work, staff recommends using a three-tiered approach. Uh, tier zero, the smallest projects would be exempt, tier one would have required staff-approved TDM plans. And then annual financial guarantees, but would not have targets or ongoing monitoring. Tier two, the largest projects would have a trip generation target based on land use, location and size. Annual and remedial financial guarantees and would be monitored for compliance. Um, besides those, uh, the smallest projects in tier zero, staff is recommending some other exemptions. These include zones MU four, RH six and RH seven, which already have a trip reduction ordinance tied to them. And then we're also currently uh discussing how to deal with a one hundred percent affordable housing. With either full or partial exemptions. Certainly, we don't want to increase the cost of affordable projects, but we also know. That the residents would clearly benefit from these types of TDM programs and currently do in many of their developments. Next slide, please. Uh, based on our best practice review, staff recommends using vehicle trip generation as the metric of success for these TDM. Uh, based on our best practice review, staff recommends using vehicle trip generation as the metric of success for these TDM programs uh, due to its accuracy. Uh, we will use surveys of tenants as a backup method if the context, uh, is such that vehicle trip, uh, studies are, are not viable. Um, rates and methodologies for measuring those vehicle trips are well-established, uh, and uh, this approach also takes into account all the trips generated by the site, not just by resident employees, but also trips like package delivery visitors, et cetera, are all part of the IT trip generation. Uh, staff recommends that a third party would conduct these surveys, uh, using a standard methodology and reporting template that would be designed by staff. Next slide, please. Uh, our approach really, uh, expands our current use of financial guarantees, where financial guarantees are paid by the developer or the owner, held by the city, and then dispersed to the tenants or property managers to implement staff-approved TDM plans. Remedial funding, uh, guarantees are, uh, for our highest tier, tier two, are also used to augment annual funds if the property is exceeding its trip generation target and is out of compliance. In that way, a portion of the remedial funds are added to the annual funds to increase the overall amount, which then can be used, uh, in enhanced TDM programs, uh, to meet the, the needs of those employees or residents. Uh, initial financial guarantees rates would be based on the size, which is also a proxy for estimated, uh, employees or residential units. Uh, we could also look at bedrooms or square footage, uh, as well for the residential units. Uh, and that would be based on this, uh, and also based on the estimated cost of the required TDM elements. Next slide, please. While the use of financial guarantees, uh, will increase annual costs, uh, to developers and owners of properties, uh, we understand the, the removal of parking minimums, which is part of this project, will very likely translate into significant one-time capital and also ongoing annual maintenance costs. Parking is very expensive to build and very expensive to maintain. So when a developer can build less parking, those cost savings could literally pay for years, perhaps in some cases even decades of TDM programs for their tenants. Next slide, please. As I mentioned, for the tier-two project, staff recommends, uh, that there is a required annual monitoring, which would include a vehicle trip generation study conducted by a third party uh, and a final report on the effectiveness of the TDM program, which would be evaluated by transportation mobility staff. If a property's, uh, vehicle trip generation is below the target three consecutive years, then we can cease annual monitoring, but have a cadence of perhaps every five years, just to keep tabs on each of those developments. If a property exceeds its vehicle trip generation target in the following year, a portion of those remedial funds are used to augment the annual funds. This allows for an enhanced TDM plan, uh, to be designed and funded, and then a new three-year cycle starts in terms of the monitor. Next slide, please. In terms of them next steps, uh, based on additional input we hope to receive, uh, staff will continue to refine the ordinance approach, uh, likely in terms of land use designation and, and the exemptions I spoke of, determining annual financial guarantee and remedial financial guarantee rates, uh, looking at the TDM and parking management program services or, or policies that would be requirements in certain circumstances, and then also detailing our compliance and enforcement process. Uh, we hope to return in August to boards and then council in September. Uh, and then, once, uh, we pass an ordinance, staff would then focus on the implementation steps, including the internal standard operating procedures that we need to manage this type of program, developing a toolkit for both developers and property owners, but also tenants, and then all the external facing TDM ordinance program information and education that we need to have, uh, available to people. Uh, and then developing our implementation timeline when the ordinance would go in effect, when all these, uh, things are created and approved. And with that, I will pass it on. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Sam. So you would have seen in your memo, we have laid up two key issues for your discussion related first to the public hearing ordinances. Does city council recommend any modifications to either ordinance eighty-seven hundred or eighty-six ninety-six? But as we're still under development of the TDM ordinance as well, we're also asking for any additional guidance you might have regarding that TDM ordinance, um, that will complement the ones that are before you tonight. We have a suggested motion on the screen and also in your memo, but I will stop sharing, and we're happy to take any questions.
Thanks much, Lisa and the other presenters. That was jam-packed full of information. Appreciate all the effort. All right, clarifying questions for city staff. We've got Tina, then Tara, then Matt, then Lauren.
Hey, thank you for all the information. Um, so my first question is, when we did our parking utilization study of spaces, are we sharing that information with CU as they are developing and can building a lot of parking as well?
I don't believe we've directly shared it with them, but we are ha- happy to collaborate and share all of that data that we've collected over the last decade.
Okay, cuz they're building, um, a significant amount of parking garages throughout the city to support their campus. And it might be helpful when we collect data, and they're also about thirty percent of the city are residents. So it might be good to start incorporating that, uh, together. Um, the other pa- space, uh, pieces, do we know what the utilization, uh, is of our EV spaces that are being provided?
That's a great question. We did not, um, specifically count that with the most recent count that we had, but that would be an interesting future study, definitely.
Okay, cuz I also get concerned about the availability of EV parking and, uh, wanna make sure that people who don't have dedicated garages or live on a sidewalk where they can run a cord also have the opportunity to charge. Um, another question I had was about, um, the engagement of private schools or, well, first, I'm just clarifying, when we say schools, it only means private or religious schools, uh, pro-kio or religious. It doesn't apply to the vast majority of the schools that are public schools, correct?
Correct, because of the legal jurisdiction of BVSD, um, they are exempt from most of our requirements. However, we still say public and private schools in our land use code.
But it doesn't, but that's not, so we say that in our land use code, but it doesn't apply to the ones, the public schools.
Correct. They have, they have preemption, I believe, is the legal term.
Okay, I found that to be really confusing when I read it. And, um, I'm wondering if there's a way that we could clarify that, so that if someone is reading through the code, they understand without having to check with staff that it does not apply to, uh, public schools. Is that a possibility?
Yeah, I would ha- I would wanna check in with our city attorney's office cuz that gets into, um, kind of le- legal jurisdiction issues, and I know we've talked about it in the past. Um, and so it's been like that for a long time, where we have both public and private schools explained in the land use code. I see Brad popped on, so maybe Brad wanted to add anything, or Hella?
Yeah, Brad Mueller, uh, ju- just that very thing, that, um, there are some legal nuances to that and, and calling out any other laws that already exist in other books, but Hell is here too, so Hell, maybe you can expand.
Yeah, I think we've had the standards and new standards for our public schools, um, in our code for a long time. And there hasn't really been a court decision in Colorado on preemption, but I think it's likely that the city would be found preempted from applying its land use regulations to schools and BVSD, it's asserting that we are preempted from that, and in, in fact, their regulations haven't been applied for a long time. However, if a new school is constructed, there is an opportunity for the city, and in particular, the planning board, to provide input on that school site and the design, and that was done most recently with the new Vista School. And we do utilize those standards to provide recommendations at that point in time, so there is some use for them. But that said, they could also be eliminated from the code, then we wouldn't have any standards for public schools.
Uh, did we have engagement with the co- new construction of Shining, uh, Mountain, the Waldorf squirrel, uh, school in North Boulder?
Yes, that was all approved under the city's regulations cuz it's a private school.
Okay, um, okay, and then did we engage with the private schools when we added this new motion? Were they brought into the conversation?
That's a great question. So as this was, the changes that relate to schools actually were brought up by planning board. They weren't something that had been brought, brought up in the previous six meetings that we had had, so it wasn't a topic that we had targeted for engagement, and, um, planning board passed that motion on May twentieth. Um, so there was not specific, um, engagement on that. We incorporated it into the ordinance that's before you tonight.
Okay, um, then a question about the cargo bike parking. Um, what was the, can, what was the engagement like with the developers on the specific increase in requirements for those new design standards?
Yeah, that's a great question. So we had, I mentioned the community consultations that we had, and we had a technical expert on with some of our, um, frequent applicants. So they, they saw the, um, proposal related to cargo bike spacing, um, or larger, larger spaces for bikes. Um, and then we've also been in communication with sending out drafts and things like that. Um, so that's what, that's how we targeted those changes to those folks.
Okay, um, and then, uh, so for the Gos Grove experiment or pilot program, I shouldn't call it experiment. Um, will we also be tracking whether developers increase the parking that they build in response to the parking program? Is that, and I know there probably won't be a lot of new development in that neighborhood, but is that something we'll also be tracking?
That's a great question. I feel like that go, that's maybe towards me, but also towards, um, Lisa. Um, because in Community Vitality, we, we don't track those sorts of applications. Uh, that said, I, we will starting, like, if they trigger the traffic study, we will begin to start tracking that, so we can certainly look at that and see if there's any construction plan for that area. And if those come across, we can factor that into the evaluation analysis that we do of the pilot.
Okay, cuz I, I would just be curious if one of the consequences of limiting on-street parking would be the increase in off-street parking. And we're sort of seeing that with CU's parking garages, as they go into dense neighborhoods, they're increasing their off-street parking. And that's kind of where that's coming from. Um, okay, uh, this is great. Um, and I, uh, that's all I have for now. Thanks.
You. We got Tara, Matt, Lauren, Nicole.
I see that we have to, um, we have to, uh, approve this ord- ordinance by the end of June. So if we want to make, suggest some changes, do we even have time to do that?
Certainly, there, it's the purview of council, um, to delay the ordinance adoption. Um, I will say if there are even minor changes to the ordinance, we would have to push that to a later meeting, which based on the recess would be, um, the end of July, which would then push the effective date to the end of August. It makes things a little more complicated, um, in terms of, um, complying with the state bill. However, we can still, there are still some processes where we'll be able to comply through some administrative, um, variances for projects. It would, I guess, suffice it to say, it would be a lot simpler to have the ordinance, um, passed tonight.
Well, for instance, let's say the five percent, um, e-bike charging availability. I think that is really not enough. But it doesn't really have to do with, you know, um, it doesn't exactly have to do with the, um, parking minimums, right? Because it's about biking. So can we push this back without pushing the rest of it back? Because there are maybe one, two, three, four things that I would like to see different, but I don't feel like there's space for it.
Procedurally, procedurally, um, any changes to the ordinance would require a third reading and maybe even a fourth reading. So changing the ordinance that's before you, since it's already had its first reading, um, would delay the overall adoption. However, like I said, there's another way, um, to comply with the state without the, the ordinance adoption if council wants to make changes to the ordinance.
I could just pop in here. I mean, even if we pass the ordinance as written tonight, it technically doesn't go into effect for thirty days past the, uh, deadline. So, I mean, we're gonna have to use those administrative tools for at least a little while regardless. So I would say to council tonight, if you think there are important changes, we should consider them, uh, rather than worrying too much about the schedule, would be my feedback.
Can, can I call acquiesce on that process? Could we, I mean, is it, is it technically possible to strip out a section and pass that on emergency tonight?
I actually don't know the answer to that, so I look to Hella.
Um, it, it seems like then we don't have a full ordinance in front of us with an ordinance number and so forth. I don't know, that seems technically challenging. The other thing, um, we considered when we brought it forward, we thought about whether or not to bring it forward as an emergency ordinance, with the findings have to show that it's an emergency, um.
State statute seems to.
For the preservation of public peace, heal- peace, health, and property, and we thought that was a little bit of a stretch.
Okay, alright.
I'm just gonna pop in one more time, just pardon for, for taking over here, but, um, we are still ahead of the class by, um, having an effective date of thirty to sixty days from now. Like, in terms of the cities that are subject to this requirement, we're still gonna be well ahead of, of many of them. So I, I think, I think if we handle it administratively, we'll still be okay in terms of law. But I'll now go back to, to, I got, uh, Tara, where are you done? Yeah, alright, so we got Lauren, Nicole, Ark, Matt.
No, I had my section. I think my hand just got taken down. So, I appreciate that. I don't know why I did that. I was right after Tara. Alright, so, um, uh, so, so sort of an, sort of answered the process question, but I think we'll come back to that in maybe comments. Um, the question, the question I have kind of centers around where we ca- where we came up with the standard of two bike parking spaces per residential unit. Because when I've sort of looked around at sort of comparable cities that have sort of similar values and similar, uh, certainly values towards biking, I see standards of like point five, you know, bike parking spaces per unit and, and at the hi- a high watermark of one. So I'm wondering where we got two from, and what other comparable cities do that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So actually, it brings us back to the first phase of AMPs. So the bike parking standards, the quantitative, those were adopted in twenty-fourteen as the first major work item of AMPs. And so, um, those were pushing the boundaries, and we, as part of the, um, analysis for this part of the project, we compared ourselves to forty comparable communities, and we have higher bike parking requirements than, um, all of those communities. I believe even some other cities that you might think of, like Portland, we have significantly higher bike parking standards for certain uses. So we do have some of the highest bike parking requirements, um, in the country. Obviously, we haven't looked at every single city, but for the ones that we've looked at, um, there are some cities that have higher per-unit, um, bike parking standards because they base them on bedrooms, but that really differs, um, differentiates based on what, um, what type of units you have. So if it's, uh, property with a lot of one or two bedrooms, will end up having a higher bike parking requirement than the higher, um, bedroom count communities. But other than that, um, we do tend to have higher bike parking requirements than most.
I appreciate that. The, the other question kind of comes around, where it's more like, it's a, it's kind of a cart and the horse question. Cuz it looks like planning board, uh, recom- unanimously recommended to do a bike utilization study. And so I'm kind of wondering why that didn't happen first, cuz we did that with parking and, and long before the state, you know, sort of forced our hand, uh, to eliminate parking standards. We were leaning on that parking utilization study to lead us towards eliminating parking minimums without the state intervention. And so I'm wondering why, why we're doing the bike parking bef- re- regulations before we've done a study to even know what the utilization is. To Tara's point, she said five percent. I, I, I mean, I worry we're just throwing darts at the board without a study to give us a baseline and then a way to estimate from that baseline of what the true needs are down the road. So I, I'm just sort of wondering, h- h- how did we get there without the study and the data to drive these decisions?
Yeah, that's a great question, and that speaks to the numerous meetings that we've had with council and boards where they have indicated an interest in some of the more design standard types, types of things related to bike parking. We have tried to limit the scope and we're, we haven't changed like the overall requirements per unit because we do really think that there would be great value in having that utilization study. Like I said, bike parking was phase one of AMPs, and now it's been eleven years, so it wasn't actually intended to be part of this phase. Um, it was more that the boards and council, um, feedback. Um, it was more that the boards and council um, feedback indicated such interest that we wanted to incorporate the design standards that we've incorporated.
Okay, um. Okay, perfect. Well, well, those those answer my questions. Thank thanks, Lisa, appreciate it.
Excellent. Now we got uh, Lauren, Nicole, Mark.
Thank you, thanks for that presentation, um. I guess I will start with. Um, kind of back to this timeline issue. It sounds like. If we wanted to make some changes, we could do that tonight, or we could maybe ask for something to come back in the future. Um, if we did that, it sounds like it could be. A couple of months, like i- if we made, if we made some minor changes, or if we asked for some minor changes to come back to us in the future. There might be several months between our adoption of this and maybe the adoption of the changes, does that? Sound like potentially accurate, depending of course on the scope of what those changes might be and. Um, how many projects might we expect to come through in that kind of time period?
Yeah, another great question, so it usually, I think the fastest ordinance to get through all the planning board and city council readings and things like that is probably. At least two months um, to get through the process, um, so. Uh, but keep in mind that we do have a third leg of the stool that will have a third ordinance coming to you. In August and September for T D M, so that could be a good opportunity to roll in any additional changes. And then, now I'm forgetting your second question.
How many projects?
Many, okay, thank you. Well, that's, that's a, that's a really good one, because that's what we were considering, because with that thirty day effective, so if you pass something tonight and we have thirty days. There are not many projects that are going to, especially with a holiday and things like that, um, need their final approval within the next. Um, three weeks and uh, the projects that would be waiting for those changes or something like that, I'm sure would be happy to wait. Um, for the the changes, so um. I would say we have about twelve site reviews that on average that are approved per year, so that's about one per month, if you can think through that. And then um, many more building permits and things like that that would come through, but um. Uh, we don't anticipate that the month delay um, would incorporate very many projects.
Thank you for that. Um, and then related to to residential bike parking requirements. Um, are there different ways that developers can fulfill those requirements, like? Could a storage locker or like a, yeah, lockable storage area? Be potentially a way to meet a bike parking requirement to provide flexibility for. People who might not use it necessarily for biking, but to make sure that that's opportunities there for them, is that something developers do sometimes?
Yeah, there's some flexibility and you just have to meet the long-term bike parking standard, so that can be a lockable room, something with security nearby. Um, there's a number of different standards, it can even be a fenced-in area as long as um, the fence is secure. Um, and also, I'll point out, we have a bicycle, uh, bicycle parking reduction process. Um, where, you know, if it's a use that maybe is like, um. I'm trying to think of like a hospital or assisted living or something where you might not have the same level of bike utilization. Um, developers or applicants can make the case that they should have a reduced bike parking and it's a relatively um, simple administrative. Um, process that can reduce that parking requirement.
Perfect, thank you. And that was gonna be my next question, so. Good job rolling them in, um, and uh, finally, sorry about my puppy dog. Um, are developers, I've heard some confusion around this. Are are developers still allowed to provide parking even if we eliminate these parking minimums? Or will it make it so that no new developments have parking?
Great clarification, absolutely, developers are allowed to provide parking, um, the intent is that they would provide. The parking that they think they need rather than the city setting, the formula or standard. And so um, one, since I mentioned Buffalo was the first city that did this, they've done studies on. What happened afterwards and about half of projects provided just as many parking spaces as they would have before and half had. Um, less parking than they would have before the elimination, so. Um, it kind of just leaves it more up into the applicant's purview of what that number should be, but. Uh, based on feedback with council and boards, we decided not to set maximum parking or anything like that, so it really is up to the applicant.
Thank you so much, that's it for my questions.
So you got uh, Nicole, Mark, and Tara wants to come back.
Thank you, um, Tara and Lauren were uh, asking some of my questions and I'm just, I'm gonna dive in a little bit more on this uh, aspect of timing. Um, can you just say a little bit more about the cadence for checking in or following up on these policy changes and their impacts, so? Um, you know, there's a lot of other cities who have done this already, do we have any indications from the other cities uh, who've done this on? When, when they had information on impacts, if any?
Sure, yeah, I think the Buffalo study that I just mentioned, I think they maybe waited. Four years to to look back, the development timeline is quite long. Um, between when a a development is actually um, like conceptualized to the city and then fully built and built out and things like that. Um, so it would take a few years for larger development for us to see what the impact is. However, I will note that we have a lot of like small businesses that are currently held up by parking. Um, parking processes that could immediately open their business if if not for this parking issue. So we will see some more immediate impacts for some of those smaller developments. Where um, projects that we might not have seen go through or would have been through a much more complicated process. Um, are facilitated in um, moving forward quicker.
Yeah, thank you, um, and i- is that, is this sort of follow-up study something we would typically do? In four or five years, or whenever this is?
Yeah, actually, I was, I um, almost said that earlier in another question, but um, for some of the changes that we've made. Like our A D U changes for accessory dwelling units, we've gone back every three years and looked. At how many permits did we get, what, you know, did we eliminate the barrier here, so? The plan is to do, and actually, that was one of planning board's motions was to. Um, make sure that we are monitoring and understanding the impact that the changes have.
Well, thank you, and then um, if this were to pass tonight, uh, would that be a natural place to? And to have some data to inform possible revisions? Or is it something where we would collect some data and then not really do anything with it, or if the data were suggesting that there needed to be revisions, is that something that a future council? Um, would look at based on the data?
Yeah, I'll go back, I'll go back to the A D U example, so we use that evaluation to inform the changes when council identified. A D U barriers as one of your priorities, we use the evaluation looking back at a change that had happened three years before to understand which changes had. You know, moved the needle, which had not, and then that informed the ordinance that we brought to council, so we would anticipate doing something similar to that.
Okay, cool, and would that need a council like to make it a work plan priority or something in the future? To do that, or is that just sort of part of what you all do in your ongoing efforts to continually improve things in the city?
I, we do it as on part of our ongoing, I guess I'll, I can look to Brad who plans my work plan for me, but. Um, we do try to keep up on those, so um, I would say that maybe not like at a specific year, but. Um, you know, at a regular cadence, we'll look back and um, see what the impacts have been.
So is it, it just fair to say that? If the data were showing that something was seriously wrong, if we were leading to a lot more traffic or a lot more parking problems or something like that. That's something that you all might naturally bring back to a future council in three or four years when, when those data are coming in.
Absolutely, and we don't even need the, like, if there's a major problem going on that's being raised, um, we would, we would want to address that. Like you've seen in code changes or code cleanups and other ordinances that we've brought to you.
Yeah, just to elaborate a little bit on uh, Lisa's comments. Um, we know there are certain items that are perennial in city governance and housing and and. Transportation are certainly some of those, so. It might be tied to a project for future enhancements, it might be. Um, just certainly if there is a problem that's becoming clear anecdotally, we we would prioritize that, but. I think it is safe to say that on some version of a cadence of three to five years. We would be looking at at that fairly closely and scientifically.
Great, thank you, um, and then I just have one last question, which is uh, related to the T D M ordinance that we'll see later this summer. Um, can the owners change their approach over time, like is it adaptable, so? You know, maybe they're the population living their um, shifts or something like that and they want to try out some new ones, is that? It's not locked in, right? It's a little bit malleable over time?
Yes, I would say there's flexibility and customization, especially if we have use changes, uh, change in tenants, we could reevaluate. Uh, the staff-approved T D M plan, look at the available funding we have through financial guarantees and make adjustments that. That fit the needs of the tenants, whether they're employees or residents.
Great, thank you so much.
Thanks, now we have Mark, and then Tara, if you don't mind letting Brian go next, and then we'll come back to you.
Um, I only have two comments and they're, and they're both derivative, uh, first I wanted to support, um.
Mark, Mark, sorry to keep interrupting, we're clarifying questions right now, we'll do deliberations in a little bit.
I'm sorry.
No worries at all, Ryan.
Lisa, thanks, I have heard two concerns that I wanna uh, run by you and see if you can uh, field, um. The first is, what if any costs? Um, in terms of added floor area requirements that would lead to higher costs in that way? Um, what additional costs do do you foresee with this policy compared to the existing state? Or is there, is there any assessment done or a way, a way to think about that?
Um, do you mean like off-street parking or bike parking or particular parts?
Say, yeah, thanks, sorry, um, I I I think I'm mostly thinking about developer standards to create. Um, uh, uh, increased floor area, essentially floor area for bike parking, I think that's the, really the concern I've heard, so. Is there any way to comment on that?
Yeah, um, I can't comment exactly on the costs, I will note that we didn't change the number of spaces that would be required. Um, the overall number that we talked about, so technically, they would have the same number of bike parking spaces, U-Racks, things like that, that they. Would need to incorporate, however, I will note, um. In terms of incorporating the larger cargo bike spaces, those. On average, I talked to my, the engineers about this, on average, they take up about three times the space of a typical bike. Parking space are what we allow now, and then those vertical or tiered racks take up about half the space. Um, so oftentimes developers will choose to do those vertical or tiered racks because it takes up less of the floor area. Um, keep in mind, in most of our zoning districts, like I mentioned, um, the the F A R, the floor area for those bike parking is exempted. So it's not necessarily um, impacting the um, approval process or things like that, but it, that doesn't mean the space doesn't exist, just because zoning. Is saying that it doesn't exist, so um, by incorporating the e-bike spaces, the cargo bike spaces and reducing the amount. That can be vertical tiered space, we do expect that larger bike parking areas would be needed to to meet the requirements.
Thanks, um, the second one is. Um, is, is there a concern that with, without? A parking regulation for developers that would encourage reductions? Uh, developers, could they not actually end up creating more parking, because you wouldn't have a process where they're. You know, we're, we're, we're inducing them to, you know, create reductions against the standard, so. I guess if you would accept that premise, then my question is, is there anything that will cons- now constrain? The byright ability to create lots of new parking, and if not, is that something that a concern that we just need to be watching, watching for?
Yeah, I think that's something that we'll need to monitor, but we discussed that when we brought um, the idea of maximum parking requirements to you all into the boards. And we just don't see many projects where um. Um, applicants try to build a lot more parking, as Chris kind of briefly mentioned, parking is extremely expensive to build. Um, especially if it's underground or um, in a garage, and so oftentimes developers are not trying to. Um, build more parking than they will actually utilize, so we do still have some site review standards um, related to not. Not having an excess of pavement and things like that, so we have some standards in the, in the land use code that would allow. Planning board to make a discretionary um, decision based on the amount of parking, but it's something we'll need to monitor. Um, many other cities do adopt maximum parking requirements, but when we looked at uh, the studies of that, it didn't actually. Um, support, um, the, the, the administration of a maximum parking requirement didn't support. The um, like it didn't change the numbers enough uh, to make it worth having that.
Got it, thank you, and that's all for my questions.
Tara, we'll come back to you before we wrap up questions.
Uh, just real quick, and this is kind of a colloquy, I guess, to Ryan, um, so my question is, is. Let's say that it's student housing and the developer or the. Doesn't think that they're gonna need a five percent of spaces to be for the cargo bikes, because most students don't ride cargo bikes. Is there any way for them to get a variance or an exception? Already, or do I have to ask for that later?
That, we are, we already have that, so in the bike parking reduction and our very smart engineers made sure. That this language was incorporated in the ordinance, so our bike parking reduction. Um, also says that they can reduce the percentage of cargo bikes um, or e-bikes. If, for the same reason, like if it's a use that's just not going to need that high. Um, so they can reduce the overall requirement and they can reduce those certain percentages that we've added.
Do you think that's a better way than me asking for you to reduce from five percent to a lower number? Do you think it's better to just leave it as is?
We um, staff thought that five percent was a, without having the bike parking utilization study, we thought that five percent. Um, was a reasonable amount for folks to meet, and then um, the anticipation, or we anticipate that once we have that bike parking utilization study. We'll be able to tweak all of these numbers, including the overall requirement, um, if we need to, whether that's higher or lower.
So are you saying that no matter what we pass tonight, or let's say on third reading, that we could change it after the bike utilization study?
Yes, if it's made a priority by city council as a work plan.
I see, okay, thank you.
Can I colloquy on Tara's comments? So, do we know, do we have any um, idea right now what the utilization is of cargo bike parking?
No, we have not done a study of that.
Okay, and then for the developer to get the exemption, would they then have to go to planning board?
No, it's a very simple administrative review process, um, doesn't even have an application form, it's just they have to make the case that they. Um, you know, explain the case of why they would need a reduced requirement and then staff would be able to reduce that.
Okay, and they could do that in less than a week?
I mean, they would just be rolled into all the rest of their applications.
Okay, and so then, but let's say. Like, how much time could that add to a project, do you think, on the high end?
The bike parking reduction? I don't think it would add.
Yeah.
Anytime.
Alright, so that we've reached the end of our questions, so we can now go to the public hearing, we have one person signed up to speak. Which is Lynn Siegel, and I do see that she is present in the meeting. So then you'll have three minutes to speak, and then just please do, confine your comments to the ordinances that we're considering as part of this public hearing.
I was at a um, police um, oversight panel meeting, so I didn't get to hear, so I declined speaking. I don't wanna speak without having heard what was going on specifically, thanks.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing and bring it back to city council to consider the two questions that um. Staff has for us, the first ques- let's just do them one by one. Um, the first question is, does city council recommend any modifications to draft ordinance eighty seven hundred or eighty-six ninety-six? So we can work through that question and then that might lead us to a motion potentially to pass those ordinances. But any suggestions for modifications, I've got Nicole and Tara.
Um, it's a no for me is the answer to that question, um, I think there'll be some regular time in the future where this will come back, uh, but I would, uh. After, how many years is this? Over ten, right, that we've been working on this, um, I am eager to uh, put this to bed, so we can move on to some other things. Knowing that um, a future council will have the opportunity uh, to weigh in with some data on any impacts or things that may need additional tweaks in the future. Thank you, and amazing work, thank you so much.
Thanks, Tina, no, Tara, Tina, Lauren.
Good point, Nicole, um, but I'm going to just say my thoughts. Even though, so just for the record, because you know, it's the last minute and I don't. I'm just pulling numbers out of a hat, as somebody said earlier, um, so for the five percent e-bike. Charging availability, I would like to see twenty-five percent. So I'm just adding a two in front of the five, that's not that. That's not that big. And then for the vertical, I feel like those vertical, what are they called? Vertical. Vertical.
Vertical or tiered racks?
Thank you. Vertical or tiered racks. I feel that be, as a short, weak person. That they would be useless for me and I'm not gonna say old women, but probably some. I feel like it's, in my opinion, a way to just check a box for bike parking. And it's definitely, I don't know, very many bikers, they say it's their favorite. So I would like to reduce it further to fifteen percent. And I also pulled that money, uh, my number out of my hat. Not that I ever wear hats, because I don't. And um. That is what I have. That's it.
Thanks Tara. We can, um, as we move through people's ideas, we can straw pull some of these things as we get, get towards a motion. Uh, Tina, then Lauren, Matt, Mark, Ryan.
Thanks. Uh, I would like to remove any references to schools. Because it applies to such an incredibly limited amount of um schools. It's only private. But we're not able to differentiate that in the code, so it adds length and complexity to an important code. And I think dilutes the value of the rest of the code. Um, this is because we're in a area with a declining amount of kids. I think this probably won't even go into effect anytime soon. I don't imagine we'll have new construction and this only applies to new construction or major redevelopment. So this is not an urgent request, but I think for clarity and for our goals of simple code, we should just remove it. Because I, I think it's a very, very extremely low impact. I don't think it will, I, I don't think we'll see any impact for decades, so. Um, and then the second thing is in general. I, I'm okay with the code the way it is, but I'm concerned about creating so many very specific regulations around bike parking. Without having done a bike study. And I, um, I feel like we hear from developers a lot about how. It adds complexity to projects and um, you know, we're, what the, the parking minimum language in the state legislation is very clear. That developers probably know the parking needs the best. And I don't think they put, they necessarily know the biking needs the best yet, but I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if they know better than we do. Already and they tend to build what creates value uh in their projects. So. To the extent that we need to regulate it so specifically, I'm, I'm actually a little hesitant, but I do wanna promote bike parking. Um, so. I think I'm okay with it where it is, but if we can move along with this study and, and make sure that we're generous with reductions. Um, and then hopefully we'll have a better idea of what's really needed. Thanks.
Thanks. Uh, Lauren, then Matt, Mark, Ryan.
Thanks. I just wanted to put in a thank you for um the Goss Grove Pilot Project. I remember, I think it was my first year on council, asking for a work plan item related to seeing about paid parking and. Paying for busing and um, yeah, so I just appreciate that getting worked into this. Thank you so much. And I thought Tina's comments were great.
Yeah, uh, Matt, Mark, Ryan.
Appreciate it. I, I wanna first say thank you for staff, especially on the bike part, uh, on the uh, uh, just the regular car parking stuff. I mean. I, I know I, as long as I've been involved in city stuff, this has been discussed since, as long as I can remember. About what to do with, with parking minimums and, and all of that. So it's great to finally be here um with a helpful nudge from the state. Um, I, you know, I just wanna dovetail a little bit on Tina's comments about, you know, usually. The developers know what they need, hence why they were all, you know, half of, half of these projects were demanding parking reductions, because they realized they didn't need all the parking. Um, but they prob- it, it, really the answer here to the bike parking thing is less about regulate, over-regulating it and creating the demand. And so things like CAN and the work we're doing to promote greater at usage of biking and movement through our city with bikes. Is the vehicle to get the best bike parking we need, because then we've created the demand that the developers will then have to respond to. Um, just like they do with everything else. They're responding to the demand pressure. So, so ultimately, I think that's the, that's the best impulse here to get the change that we want. Uh, rather than mandating on the front end that they must have a certain amount, even if the demand's not there yet. Um, so, so I think, I think we kinda maybe have this a little bit in reverse. Um, I do think there's a phase two here, absolutely. I mean, we heard it in planning board and tabs feedback. Um, that I still think the study should come first before we regulate it. I, I think we've got it a little backwards there. Uh, like geometric standards and, and most importantly, we've discussed this before. I know, I know Ryan's discussed this as well as. How do we provide a simplified streamlined way for existing developments to reclaim their unneeded parking? Without having to go through site review and a large discretionary process. Sure, they wanna add a three-story addition, you gotta go through our process. But if they wanna just put out, uh, you know, take twenty spaces and do some grass, some tables and a nice little palapa for, you know. Uh, their, their workers or residents to have a space to eat in the, in this hot summer, there should be a really easy way for. Existing developments to, to do that. And, and I really hope that a phase two sort of works in earnest to do that. Uh, because we've mandated a lot of parking that we don't need and now people are feeling a little bit out of luck. Like, great, I built this thing, now I don't need it. Now you got rid of the requirements to have it. Uh, I think we can reverse engineer this quite simply. Um, and candidly, I think we might be rolling back some of this bike parking standard. So. Um, a phase two of this to me seems inevitable. Um, and, and I just hope that we, we move forward with that. Uh, but great job to staff to get us here on a lot of the parking fronts. Um, and I'm, and I'm eager to see what a phase two can be to make this really what Boulder wants. Um, because I think we're pretty close. Appreciate it.
Thanks. Mark, Ryan, and then I'll call myself.
Hey, um, my, my comment is, is more procedural than anything else. I don't have any specific. Um, amendments to the ordinance, other than to say that um, I'm a little uncomfortable doing things on the fly. And we've had a number of interesting um suggestions. Um, and I, I kinda lean on. Um, Mayor Brockett's comments earlier that the, the sky is not going to fall. If we end up with a third reading. Um, I would like to see the, uh, the uh suggestions for amendment. Um, articulated by council members. Uh, and I'd like to see them considered. I, I go back to uh Matt's. Uh, issue with respect to the number of u- of bikes per unit, and it seems that that was arbitrary. Um, as, as if we were. Winning a prize for having the highest number of bikes per unit. Um, and I would like to understand how we got there and whether that's the appropriate number uh for us to, to have. So I, you know, I, I, we may well pass this today, but I think it's being a little bit hasty. Um, nothing is going to happen to us if we give full consideration to the suggestions of members of council. And the issues that they are raising. Um, I don't think the state is going to come down on us like a load of bricks. I, I, I think that there is um simply an opportunity here to. Deal with the last few issues um that have been raised and get them right. Uh, as opposed to coming back and, and fixing something later that we have already memorialized. And that's about it.
Thanks Mark. I got Ryan and now Taisha, and then I'll call on myself and come back to Nicole.
On the immediate decision, I would prefer to keep it as is and vote on it. And uh, I think it strikes the right balance. Of doing what we know now and actually being somewhat conservative in the, in some of the, 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 the percentage figures with, with um. Bike requirements and then doing a study for the rest. Uh, the bike parking numbers per unit has been established for some time. We've heard that there's a pretty um small additional, or I, that's what I've taken to be, is pretty small additional. Um, floor area requirement associated with, with what is, what is new here. Um, and I, we've also heard, uh, I, I think a really important uh im- improvement that um. The, the bike parking uh requirement has been eliminated um for, with floor area requirements. So. I, I think the critical pieces are here. Look forward to uh voting and, and moving it forward. Um, I would like to make a more general comment and speak to where we go from here and, and pick up a, a thread or two that I heard. Um, so this is a really big milestone that will stand on its own. Uh, incredible amount of work from this community and actually multiple generations of community members working on it. And hope everybody can pause and appreciate that. Um, but, but when that's, when we're done, uh, pausing. I would like to propose some future directions while it's all very fresh right now, as fresh as it's ever gonna be. Um, so two things. First, on um some just cleanup and simple fixes that logically follow what we're doing. Um, as staff has capacity. There's a few things and they've been, they've been referenced, but I just wanna outline them again. Uh, one is to address the, uh, uh, the elim- potentially eliminating the dimensional standards for car parking. Except so, those that are critical, like where there's ADA requirements or uh blocking emergency services. Um, in order to eliminate, um, or excuse me, align with the elimination of, but prospective elimination of parking minimums. Uh, the second one is to clarify, uh, what will hopefully be the simple process for existing developers or, or facility operators. To reclaim their mandated parking for higher uses. Um, and then the third one is to do this. Uh, this comprehensive needs assessment of bike parking that would need to address a number of things. Um, charging needs as highlighted in the, in the memo, development of a more integrated cross-departmental approach to bike parking security and the overall user experience. Um, potentially making some adjustments like reducing the percentage of vertical bike parking. Um, possible exemptions, if, if there's a case for it with um a cash-in-lou kind of a, kind of a model. And then other creative solutions, flexibilities, and modifications. So look forward to that when it's time. I would put those. Those items in the category of logical follow-up as staff has time, hopefully. Um, and then additionally, as a second matter. Uh, I do like the idea of us thinking about a next generation of substantive enhancements that will improve access. And other community benefits in the pu- in the future in and around parking. So a few things that I, I hope that we'll, we'll keep in mind. Uh, one, to develop a, uh, and implement a comprehensive bike parking improvement program. That will cover the existing landscape of existing facilities, which I, I, I can, there's implicitly some frustration that we can only do so much with. With developers, with new developments, because it takes so long to get those going. Um, so I look forward to talking about how we do that through a combination of. Requirements, including just targeted like large grocery stores with large balance sheets. And then also wider incentives, education and matchmaking with contractors and so on. Um, so something around that. And then also how to, um. Looking at how to um eliminating, sorry, how, how. Parking minimums and this, and, and reducing them, and eliminating them, will actually deliver on their goals of unlocking housing and using the resources in a more hu- high-value way. And just validating that this works like we think it's gonna work and making some, some of those adjustments that we, we did, we talked about um watching for. And then um, the, the last, I've got just two more. The, the um, next one is uh park looking about, looking towards how to develop parking. That is consistent with the city, that works well for smaller, slow-moving vehicles. In which there are fewer barriers between the vehicle occupants and other vehicles and, and figuring out how to, how to make parking really support that kind of a, an environment. And then finally to, with our parking, to strengthen partnerships to help meet our, our objectives, including as Tina talked about. Coordination with CU, um, it would, how we just do all of this as we go forward together. And also exploring potential new work with employers and the idea of a binding, some kind of a deep, a binding process um for all the employees coming in. So thanks for listening to all that, but I just wanted to get it out, um, while it's fresh and um, I'll, I'll yield and uh, thanks for this.
Thanks Ryan. I, I got Taisha and then I'll go to Nicole.
Um, thank you very much. I will be brief. Um, I wanted to echo of the. I, I wanna echo the concerns around not having a, a, a study that's specific to our area around the biking. However, I do feel comfortable with the comps that were provided um by the staff. Um, in lieu of having that information and by having a, a starting point. So I do feel comfortable with that aspect. If there is any section that I would recommend, that would agree with changing at this point, it would be with Tina's request on the schools. And that's just for my, you know, I just agree that our policy should um align with our practice and our authority. Um, and I, I have concerns with it being another part, part as well, but we do what we can. So um, those are the two comments that I have for this time. Thank you.
Thanks Taisha. Alright, I'll go. Um, I'll just say a huge thank you to city staff for all your amazing work on this. I. Have been around for the entire eleven-year life of NAMS. And I remember when it first came up, when I was on planning board eleven years ago, I thought, hey, maybe this will lead to the elimination of parking minimums. And maybe it won't even take that long. And so eleven years later, I'm very excited to be finishing up the project and getting ready with parking minimums. So thanks to everybody for, for the work on it. Um, the, in terms of modifications, um, you know, I'm, Tara, I'm not quite sure about your numbers, maybe changing those a little bit, maybe not quite to those, but we'll, we'll get to that in a minute. And then I thought Tina's point was good. I was uncomfortable that um, planning board was sort of doing that on the fly without any engagement with the. School communities. So I, th- those ideas may be good ones, but I don't feel like I have enough information and would wanna consult with uh existing schools. Uh, and ones that are thinking about expansions um before adding in those additional school related requirements. So I agree with Tina on that. And that's all I got. Alright, we got double dips from Nicole and Tara. We are over time, so I'll ask her swiftness.
Thank you. Uh, and I just had a question, not so much a comment. Um, it, it, it's a trade-off question. So staff, you've been absolutely swamped the past few months. Including the city attorney's office, um, who's gonna have to make any changes. Even though, um, you know, a lot of folks are already behind on the work because of all the things that have been added to people's plates this year. Um, so my question is, especially as we're heading into budget season, and we have a lot of other work plan priorities that we're trying to wrap up before the next council is seated. What gets delayed or paused, if anything, if we do more work to wrap up this set of ordinances? Cause there, I mean, there, there are always things that I would welcome changing and most of the things we do, but at some point we have to call it good enough and move on. So I'm wondering, how does this impact your work and the other things that this council is trying to get done before December?
Yeah, I'll be happy to start uh the answer on that. Appreciate the uh question, council member Spear. Um. You know, I think we alluded to it earlier and it came up from, from some of you on council as well, that if we're talking about relatively. Discrete items or tweaks, a number or phrase or taking something out that can be incorporated in what is. Um, been envisioned as a, as a third reading. Uh, beyond that, it gets harder to say because uh, anything that involves research. If anything that involves a, a lot of um ordinance drafting or even, even. Even minor ordinance drafting can create its own challenges. Um, you've heard. Uh, Lisa described that there is an interplay of all of these uh in the parking and there's a lot to untangle. Uh, with even relatively small tweaks. So I wouldn't want to represent that it's uh im- impossible, but it, but the impacts would be real. And when it comes to things that represent um actual studies and such, like the uh bike utilization study that's been. Uh, suggested by various boards and yourselves, um, and, and certainly well-received by staff as well. Um, that really though becomes a discrete work plan item that would be in future years and a trade-off against other kinds of. Uh, work plan items and budget priorities. So I hope that's uh specific enough, um. Nicole, but, but let me know if I can clarify that more.
Teresa, do you wanna weigh in on this?
I would. From a city attorney perspective, the same person is working on landscaping, Louis. Transportation demand management, all of this. And so um, s- something would get delayed. Something would get delayed. And council could choose what that is, but um, uh, the plate is full.
Uh, Tara, you got something quick?
Yes, so with that, I don't wanna wait eleven years, which is why I'm gonna just quickly sell my point. I did watch the planning board's entire um May twentieth discussion on bike parking. And there was one beloved um planning board member who wanted enough bike charging for every single bike. Now, that was a lot, but he also made a very good point that now is the time. We, we've waited so long for this and now is, you know that if you have your single family home, you can come back from your bike. And uh bike ride and you could just plug your bike in. And people can't necessarily do that now. And like removing, i- in the packet, it said, well, people wanna remove their batteries. Well, how many people remove their batteries now? Most bikes, you don't have to do that anymore. So because I don't wanna wait eleven years, I'm asking us to please increase that five percent. Which was, I think, random to a higher number of approximately how many e-bikes we think people have right now compared to regular bikes. Um, with also the ability of uh variants, because let's say student bike, let's say students mostly use. Um, what are the other ones that they use? B-cycles. And they also have a, a lot of students still have a lot of regular bikes. So. That's why I'm gonna push for that. Erin, you have a slight smile on your face. That's why I'm gonna push for that. Erin, you have a slight smile on your face. And the other thing I wanna say. Is I also wanna push for reducing those vertical tiered. Much of my get jiggits because they are annoying and I think twenty-five percent is just too much. And I also don't wanna wait eleven years for that. So those are my two things I have to say as.
Okay, good. Well, we'll we'll engage with that uh uh Tara. So do you wanna? Can you please provide a specific number? So you would like to change the five percent of um spots with um charging supports to what number?
Well, I was gonna say twenty-five percent, but I'm actually open to any amount cuz I think five percent is just too little.
I'll suggest fifteen, but.
Okay, let's suggest fifteen.
Nicole's got her hand raised.
Yeah, I was just wondering, um Erin, if we could do a straw poll just to see. Um for sort of this trade off question, cuz I hear that even if it's not tonight, we're making a trade off question. We will be making a trade off question. And so as as people are about to propose some changes and things like that, I would just like to know. Are people okay with the um uh Teresa, I think you said it was the wooey, the TDM. Um there may have been one other uh ordinance in there that um is potentially at risk. Uh if we continue work on this one, I would just like to see a straw poll and just see that. Folks are are comfortable with making that that trade off.
I can clarify. I think if the ordinance were changed to use the number fifteen instead of five. I don't think that would impose a significant work requirement on city staff. I think that just means a third reading and it takes thirty more days. But Teresa, can you confirm that?
Mayor, that's accurate.
Yeah, so so I think I think the points about the trade offs were w- would be if we continued with larger future initiatives. Rather than just tweaking the ordinance that we have in front of us tonight.
Okay, thank you. And and I would just ask that if there is anything that comes up in the uh people's ideas for changes. That that might put something else at risk, um can we know that and just make that decision?
Very good. So staff, please flag if anything comes up that would impose that kind of trade off. Brad, did you wanna add to that?
I I did wanna uh just to clarify a point that I think is being misunderstood, the five percent, um and I'm not making this up. For say uh observation to advocate one way or another, but just the five percent was based on a. Casual but but not comprehensive review of other communities, so it's not entirely random. Um but certainly, you know, there's the possibility to do more.
Right, and a thought before.
Yeah, thanks. Just to call the way, Erin, yeah, I I just was kind of making thinking a more general point that I heard Nicole saying, which is. Um do we have, would it be possible to do a straw straw poll to see who is interested in voting tonight and not going to a third reading? I mean, we're doing a bit of a technical analysis of staff work plan and like all this stuff, but there seems to be a threshold question about are we comfortable? Moving this to beyond recess and what all might come with that. And I would be interested to vote on that if you would be.
Yeah, really quick, who is interested in entertaining possible small amendments tonight that would push us to a third reading? Raise your physical hand if you're interested in considering this. I got four. Five. Okay, so we got we got a threshold to at least consider checking in on it. Thanks for that clarification, Ryan. So I'm gonna and let's do this quickly. Alright, we got Tara's suggestion to change the five percent. Uh number of charging ports to fifteen percent. All in favor of making that change, raise your physical hand. We got four. Okay, so Tara, no go on that guy on that one. Um your other one was about vertical. Racks from twenty-five percent maximum to fifteen percent maximum, is that correct? Okay, all in favor of changing the maximum number from twenty-five percent to fifteen percent? Alright, we we have four on that one. Okay, so so no go on that one. And then Tina, I'm gonna turn to you. Do you wanna restate your uh suggestion?
Yes, just to remove the new school requirements that were made during the uh planning board. There are just two of them, the distance of the school and eliminating vertical parking.
Uh so all in favor of that modification, raise your physical hand. We got, we got seven to eight. We got eight on that one. Okay, so here's gonna be, and and so that's it. That's all the things that were on the table. So here's giving uh my request to city staff. We still have another question from staff to answer. I wonder if our attorneys could have specific amendment language uh. Put together to implement Tina's cuz it's not quite in uh official motion forms. Do you think that would be doable over the next few minutes?
No. I mean, not not to be too difficult about it, but we're we have to. If with that change, we have to go to third reading anyway. And so um if you wouldn't mind. We we can go through and strike the relevant provisions, but um it's a substantive change, so it will require a third reading now.
Well, of course it requires a third reading. I was just wondering if you wanted the detailed language about exactly which sections to strike. Or if Tina's more um uh high level language was sufficient.
Oh, thank you for the clarification. Um I think that council member Mark was um adequately identified what she was looking to strike.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. In that case, why don't we finalize this by making some motions on on this uh the. Ordinances in front of us. But Nicole, you have a thought?
Well, I I just have just one more question. My understanding was that this this piece is not anything that would have impacts for potentially. A decade or more. Um I I just wanted to clarify. That that was the case cuz I, you know, to your point, Tina, when you're talking about it, we weren't really looking for new schools or anything like that. Um not really any plans to have new schools coming in with our population declining and stuff like that. So is this anything that we expect to have an impact? Because if it's not gonna have an impact before the time that we would naturally, not we. Next council, future council will look at it again. Is there value in adding another reading is is where I'm at.
Well, Nicole, we we did just have. Yeah, we did just have a straw poll on the question, so. You know, the it would happen the next time a private school did a significant expansion or a a rebuild and we don't know when that would happen. Terry, you wanna final thought before we vote or make a motion?
I realize that uh it's a no, but now that we're half the third reading anyway, for all the people that voted, we needed one more vote. I'm assuming we can't re- we relitigate that, correct? Or can we?
I mean, I just said to Nicole, we we just had a straw poll on that, so I think we probably should let that let that stay. Sorry, Tara. Um we have a couple suggested, we have suggested motion language in the chat if anyone wants to dig that up. Tina.
Sure, I'll try to do this. I move to adopt the motion to adopt. Ordinance eighty-seven hundred amending section two-two fifteen neighborhood permit parking zones and chapter four-twenty-three neighborhood parking zone permits. To update standards for on-street parking management and setting forth related details with the changes suggested during this meeting. Should I do the second one as well or just do that?
I'll just one at a time, but maybe you say with the with the change that you specifically proposed.
With the changes that I specifically proposed around uh not including the planning board's motions around schools.
Do we have a second? Matt, got it. Okay, uh Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
Sorry, everyone, trying to maneuver those buttons. Alright, we'll start the roll call for the amended eighty-seven hundred. With council member Spear.
Yes.
Wallack.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Council member Mark was.
Yes.
And Shuhar.
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-seven hundred is hereby amended and passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Uh can we, can we do a clerical correction to the record? I'm sorry.
Which is?
It's not amending eighty-seven hundred, it's amending eighty-six ninety-six.
Oh, thanks for catching that. Okay, so Tina, you're you're gonna have to re-say that for the next motion if you wanna make the next motion.
Okay, so motion to adopt, I move that we adopt ordinance eighty-six ninety-six. Amending Title Nine Land Use Code BRC nineteen eighty-one to modify off-street parking requirements. And amending chapter two of the City of Boulder Design and Construction Standards. DCS originally adopted pursuant to ordinance five-nine-eight-six to update standards for bicycle parking. And setting forth related details uh as amending during the conversation by removing the. Uh planning board suggestions around the uh schools.
Second.
Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Uh Alicia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. We'll start the roll call for the amended eighty-six ninety-six with council member Spear.
Yes.
Wallack.
Yes.
Weiner.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Benjamin.
Yes.
Mayor Brockett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Folkerts.
Yes.
Council member Mark was.
Yes.
And Shuhar.
Yes.
So that I'm clear, ordinance eighty-six ninety-six is hereby amended and passed. And will be scheduled for a third reading.
Thanks so much for that. Alright, our last thing to address as part of this agenda item is the second question for us, which is. Does city council want to provide any additional guidance regarding the TDM ordinance currently under development? That will complement the ordinances eighty-seven hundred and eighty-six ninety-six. And and if you don't have any feedback, that's totally fine too, but raise your hand if you do have additional feedback. Tina.
Uh yes, I uh would just ask that um. We get some time to understand it a little bit better and work on how we can simplify the language when we talk about TDM. Uh both to developers and to tenants. Uh it's a it's a little hard to follow sometimes and I'm newer to this area. Uh so I think anything that could help introduce our community in a way that feels really accessible would be fantastic.
Alright, Chris gives the big thumbs up. Nicole?
Yeah, my only feedback is um this is great. I really love where we're going. Appreciate the standardization of some of the things we're already doing. Um and I think this is going to work very nicely with the other ordinances that we just passed. So thank you, staff.
I'll ditto what Nicole just said. And and Ryan?
Yeah, I just wanted to say something similar that this was originally gonna be part of the, you know, the this the thing we're deciding today and um. It's really important for helping with with neighborhood impact, um traffic impact mitigation. So just hope we all remember that as we get into it. And if I could, while I'm at it, I just wanna say for the record, I liked Tara's motion. I probably would have voted for it if it if it was already established, we were gonna move forward. Um on a third reading. I just um am really nervous about going to a third reading. So anyway, thanks, everyone.
Alright, well, that wraps us up. So huge, huge thank you again to city staff. This has been very complicated. It's been very many years. And uh works. So really appreciate you getting us to this enormous milestone and we look forward to finishing it out with TDM in September.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanna make sure the record is clear with the recorded vault that we took for ordinance eighty-seven hundred. That ordinance is hereby adopted and not amended and passed. So I just wanted to make sure the record was clear.
Thank you for that, Alicia. Okay, um we still have two things uh to discuss. We are running a little bit behind, so let's see if we can make up some time on item five A.
Alright, thank you, sir. Five, item five A is um our matters from the city manager. And it is the polling survey results on the twenty-twenty-five potential tax ballot measures related to long-term financial strategy.
Thanks so much. And our uh new CFO is getting quite good at our council meetings, so I'm gonna pass it on directly to Krista.
Well, thank you, Nurya, and good evening, Mayor Brockett and members of city council, Krista Morrison, Chief Financial Officer. Uh the city's, the City of Boulder's Long-Term Financial Strategy is a twenty-twenty-four council priority. And multi-year initiative that focuses on the development of a comprehensive financial strategy. To help guide decision-making and long-range financial health of the city. For background, the Long-Term Financial Strategy, um upon prior guidance from the Blue Ribbon Commission. Two thousand eight and two thousand ten reports and Budgeting for Community Resilience Report of twenty nineteen. These reports call for a comprehensive financial plan. Cautioned the city's over-reliance of sales tax and dedication of funding sources. And encourage the development of an outcomes-based budgeting system. One of the four initiatives of the Long-Term Financial Strategy. Is to develop a multi-year ballot measure strategy for two thousand five and two thousand six to support unmet needs. Tonight's meeting will focus on the polling results for the two thousand and five. Two ballot items that city council um wanted to pursue further information. The first is an extension of the existing point three, community, culture. Resilience and safety sales and use tax from and and uh excuse me, and and. An ending date of twenty thirty-six. Changing that to uh twenty fifty or permanently to continue supporting city infrastructure and maintenance projects. As well as nonprofit capacity building and capital investments. The second item is the creation of a public realm or parks and improvements tax. Which would increase the uh the existing permanent parks property tax. From point nine mils to two point two-five-two mils and expand the use of that tax. More broadly in the public realms such as parks, open space, civic buildings and areas such as right of ways. Streets, sidewalks, bike lanes and multi-use paths. I wanna take a moment uh first off to thank members of the Financial Strategy Committee for your work. On these initiatives along with uh Budget Officer Charlotte Husky, who is here this evening. Uh the continued work on the Long-Term Financial Strategy, along with the support of this city council. To ensure that we have a financially sustainable boulder. Questions for council this evening, and we'll touch on these at the end of the presentation. Is do council members have questions on the twenty-twenty-five statistically valid polling survey? And results of the two potential tax ballot measures for consideration on the twenty-twenty-five ballot. And question two is do council members have clarifying questions on the ballot language included within the polling survey? Of the potential tax ballot measures. We have this evening uh Pro Bolski Research and they're here to present the twenty-twenty-five polling results. For city council's consideration and we are also here to support any questions. So with that, I'll turn this over to Adam. To um go through the detail of the polling results.
Thank you very much. Glad to be here and uh it it's been a pleasure working with staff uh. Getting to this point, uh very a lot of coordination to to get here. Uh I'm gonna show you the executive presentation. There's a lot of data behind this. So we can certainly answer questions tonight and we certainly have. Uh uh you know, weeks and months to to dive in in other ways uh beyond beyond this evening. Uh there's hundreds of pages of data behind this that will can be used for for uh for strategy. So uh first off, uh this is a very typical uh voter poll. For a a ballot measure, for revenue uh measure, for for looking at where the city stands in in uh in front of the voters. Um took about twenty minutes to complete. It was offered in English and Spanish. Multi-mode meaning we met the voter where they prefer to communicate, which is pretty much standard for today. On the phone, online, most people choose to talk to us online. Uh it's just how we communicate today. And uh four hundred uh completed uh responses. Uh context statewide, we might do nine hundred or a thousand. So in a city the size of Boulder, quite robust compared to what we might use statewide and be highly predictive of outcomes. Um and similar strategy we used in two thousand twenty-three when uh we were a part of the successful effort uh uh leading up to twenty twenty-four. Uh and as you can see, about two percent of your uh likely voters, that's what the constituent. Uh, and as you can see, about two percent of your, uh, likely voters, that's what the constituency was here, uh, chose to respond to us in Spanish. We always explain, that doesn't mean they don't speak English. It means that's a preference. Uh, and it doesn't mean our English respondents don't speak some other language. It's just what they prefer and what they responded with. So, getting into the data, um, we ask a question that says, uh, you know, do you generally approve or disapprove of the job the city's doing, providing services to residents? Um, you are in the positive. Fifty-three percent say they approve. And, uh, while I, I think, um, I can imagine this can feel like a sucker punch. Uh, it, it doesn't feel good to have, uh, a big number of people say they disapprove. We are in two thousand twenty-five. Um, we are in an environment where many, uh, government agencies are upside down, where disapprove is greater than approve. Uh, and so you are in uniquely positive position as, as, you know, uh, as, as, you know, difficult that might be to see here. Um, and, uh, a, and it's just the reality. There's a national narrative that is telling us all, wherever we live, that, that we're supposed to be disappointed in government. We're supposed to not trust government. Uh, and so, so the fact that you are rising above that is, uh, is, is pretty impressive. I'll also explain here, as we giving context going forward, this is not an academic exercise, right? We don't have an F here. Uh, we have fifty percent plus one of Americans agreeing on something. It's, it's kind of a hallelujah moment. Fifty-three percent, y- you know, we're, we're doing even better. So, i- it's, it's, uh, it's a strong number. The other thing we'd like to look at is kind of the delta, and, you know, we've got a, a decent-sized group of people, ten or eleven percent people who are more likely to approve. It's, it's, it's a strong place to be comparatively. We asked people, because we're getting into this whole concept of funding, we said, uh, thinking about city services, uh, you know, where, where would you like to see funds increased? Where would you like to put money more towards? And we're asking a question that, you know, uh, w- we're kind of putting people on the spot, uh, because this is not what they think about on a daily basis. It's, it's not a part of their, their, their daily conversation. They're not thinking about you all. Uh, and so, when we, we give them a list, they're going to think of what's top of mind and, and what, you know, is most, uh, relatable to them. And you can see they're, they've chosen some things. Uh, they were able to choose three, so you're going to see more than a hundred percent there. And, uh, you can see what rises to the top, uh, that visceral reaction of where they think you should be putting more resources towards. And you can see what those are, and none of these are to be dismissed, but clearly there's a couple there at the top where they'd like efforts to be, be focused. Uh, and then, we take away all the people, the things that people, uh, answered for the ones that they answered, and we say, okay, what would you say we should reduce? And again, we're putting them in, in a, uh, a unique position, uh, kind of giving them control over the budget essentially, and saying, where would you take away resources, uh, if it was up to you? And you can see, you know, we have a new one rise to the top. There are arts and cultural programs, not meaning that there's a clamoring to dismiss these programs. It just means if I'm, you were asking me a question, I'm going to tell you in the, the, the plurality of, you know, not even, you know, nineteen, twenty percent, the, the highest number is that. But you'll see also, uh, affordable housing support is, is number two, where it was, where people wanted to dedicate resources. So, you can see different people are, are bringing in different things. Homelessness is also up there. Uh, whereas, you, you know, it was, it was high up on the list. That speaks to tolerances, right? And maybe I don't have an exposure to, to homeless, uh, as much as other people do, and, and that's why I might have a different answer. Um, these are useful, uh, from a, a messaging standpoint going forward. Um, and, and I can answer questions about them, but maybe not so exciting to, to look at at the moment. We asked them about infrastructure, infrastructure specifically, very, you know, very focused on physical plant. And we say, where would you like resources to be dedicated? And you can see there's a pretty clear standout there, roads and bike and, and, uh, bike lanes and sidewalks, the, 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 me getting from here to there kind of message. And, and that's a, uh, uh, that's something we can all relate to. Uh, beyond that, recreation centers, uh, you know, renovations and, and replacements. And we always see, uh, snow and ice maintenance, uh, y- you know, high on the list in Colorado. So, um, this is where they're, they're really want you to live and what you want to be focusing on. If you talk about the idea that you're going to be putting money towards infrastructure and you have a big backlog, you're going to have a, a instant connection with your constituency. We then again, uh, took out those, those items that people chose and asked them to say, what would we cut necessarily? And again, it's a hard choice because, uh, there, these are all things that people care about and are really relevant. Um, they choose at the top there, police and fire stations, renovations and replacements. This is something we see everywhere, and this is a little bit difficult to, uh, understand perhaps, because we want to always be, uh, have great facilities for, for our first responders. But people don't necessarily think of it as, as something that's necessary. Uh, they're not so interested in the bathrooms for, for, for the first responders. They're more interested in things that they can relate to. So, this is not so telling, other than this is where they gravitate towards if you tell me they have to choose. We then test message efficacy, uh, and, and we, we ask them to agree or disagree with a whole series of messages. And, and you can see here, uh, those include, uh, a message that says, hey, delaying maintenance leads to higher long-term costs and emergency repairs. We, we, we ask them essentially to be economists at some level and understand that spending money today is, is more economical than spending money tomorrow. Cost rise. We're all seeing that, so they can really relate to that. And they understand the idea that, that if something breaks and you have to fix it in an emergency, the costs are higher. Eighty-six percent agree with this message. So, to the extent that this is tied to the need and the, the idea of why you're putting something on the ballot, you're extending a, a tax, then that is going to really be a strong message that you're going to want to talk about with, with your public. You're, and I'll be clear here, and I'm sure city attorney will be clear, right? You're never, as a city, advocating for a tax, but you're certainly talking about the, the impact of one passing or one failing. And this is a clear indicator of what you would talk about, uh, in that process. Again, you've got another eighty percent agreement message that says, uh, you know, you, your residents expect a high level of service, and that requires setting priorities, meaning, you know, taking those limited resources and putting them where they, uh, where they most are needed. Uh, so they're recognizing that you don't just have the money to spend on everything. Uh, that's a, a helpful thing, because you can be grounded in that, that they know that. Uh, and then we have some other messages that, um, can kind of be helpful in, in understanding the mindset of the voter. Uh, and that is, you know, we talk about earmarking funds, lets residents really steer resources where they want them to go. But then we also get down here to fifty-six percent where they say they understand, um, or, or, um, I'm sorry, fifty-two percent, where they understand when you dedicate funds, it limits the city's ability to make, you know, uh, uh, funding decisions, wh- where to put dollars. And so, there, there's different varying levels of, of, um, of messaging here that, that, uh, can be utilized over the course of the, the outreach effort. Getting directly into the vote, and, and I'll quickly show you, this is a sunset, uh, opportunity, and this is permanently extended. So, uh, we tell them essentially what would be on the ballot. This is what they would see sitting at their kitchen table, uh, and how they would, would fill out their ballot. And, uh, a, and, you know, it, it's, it's not so pretty with, with some of the, the details in there, but it's, that's the way the law says it's got to be written. And, uh, explaining that we would take this to two thousand fifty, you have sixty-one percent saying they would look to extend it, that they would support that. Um, now, uh, you, you certainly have, um, you know, twenty-five percent, a quarter of the voters saying no, and fifteen percent that are unsure. Uh, the delta between yes and no is more than two to one, very strong number to have. Uh, this is a place where I think I've characterized it in, in answering questions as good. Uh, a good place to start from, uh, and, uh, and an opportunity to, to, uh, potentially, if it were on the ballot, to have success, to have it pass. Um, and you have fifteen percent who just don't have context yet, don't know, uh, a chance to maybe educate them, and, and they may be more interested in being supportive. Interesting enough, when we give them, we, we did the split sample, so half the voters got each one of these messages. We tested the idea of permanently extending it, and that goes to sixty-four percent. Now, they didn't have context. They didn't know that we asked everybody else that it was only, uh, going to go to two thousand fifty. But it, it essentially says that, that it's either no difference, or in this case, a few percentage points better, if you just let this thing go. The idea that, that, you know, we don't have to address this again. Uh, this can be a council decision on, on, on how these monies are allocated. We don't have to worry about coming back to the voters. They support that. Uh, you know, we hear are not quite, but approaching, you know, three to one scenario. So, really, uh, a, a place that, you know, you'd want to consider the idea of, of no sunset, if that's a policy in the area you want to go to. Um, we have some messages. Uh, w- we talk about the idea that, that, um, these, uh, this passing this measure would help you kind of reduce that backlog of three hundred eighty million dollars in maintenance and repairs for roads, parks, you know, civic buildings. Um, sixty-five percent of your likely voters are more likely to vote yes, based on knowing that's kind of where some of these resources would go to. Um, the idea that you're already struggling to maintain, uh, and repair bridges, streets, roads, again, talking to about the, the issue that they're most concerned about, where they want to place dollars the most. We didn't know that initially, but this is kind of where we're lining up. And then the idea that you're really good at getting federal grant money, but, uh, we don't really know what's going to happen with that going forward. And there's a recognition by a majority of your voters that they get it, that, that's like, okay, you're awesome for going after it and doing a good job of getting it, but wow, uh, we're not sure where those monies are coming from. That's a, a net positive in the idea that, yeah, we're concerned about those monies may be coming, not coming from the feds, so we might have to do it ourselves internally. We, uh, after a whole series of messages, uh, not just those, but those are the ones that are most interesting to look at, we then ask them again, the, 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 um, uh, the sunset, uh, question, and you're at fifty-six, fifty-nine percent. And then the no sunset question, you're at sixty-one percent. The bottom line is, uh, you really don't have a big appreciable difference, uh, in, 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 uh, after you've talked to them through those messages. Uh, now, you do, uh, you know, move a couple people here or there, uh, but essentially, uh, it's, it's a good thing to talk about those things, and you also have generally supportive, uh, voters on this subject. They, they understand the value proposition, and they're, uh, they're on board with it. We then ask a question about the, uh, a- as was explained, uh, taking the, the mill levy from, you know, point-nine to, uh, two-point-two-five. And you can see, uh, y- you don't have majority support. In fact, you're, you're a little bit, uh, higher plurality, saying they're voting no. Um, a big group of people who say they are unsure. And, uh, this is, you know, not the place you want to start from, of course, if you're going to put something on the ballot. But I will say we have some messages that are, are relevant to people. Um, we talked specifically about putting these dollars toward, uh, land acquisition and parks and recreation, very specific things. Uh, open space, where we would put these dollars. Um, and sixty-two percent are, are more supportive based upon that. And then also, the idea when we very hone it in and get very specific, about eighty dollars on a million dollars, uh, what we actually, you know, get out of this. Uh, fifty-six percent become supportive based upon that. So, there are, there is a logic system that says you might have, uh, uh, you know, a message to talk about here, but it's a, uh, i- it's a big, pretty steep hill to go, uh, from here, uh, to, to do that. Um, and, you know, we, we've seen, uh, we've seen it before. And so you can see, after some messaging, you have forty-four percent support and forty percent opposed, voting no. So, you can see messaging actually moves that dial, um, w- with robust, uh, outreach and education. Uh, not advocacy, but talking to the, the voters about what you can accomplish with the resources and what could happen if you don't have them. You may be in a position to have a, um, a, a, be in a stronger place. Maybe not in a year or two, maybe it's a, a longer-term proposition, but, uh, certainly something that you can talk about and get more support for over time. Uh, just a quick talk about, uh, uh, your, your demographics. This is not your residents, and this is not your voters. This is your likely voters. So, it's very, uh, i- i- you know, it's, it's older, it's whiter, uh, it's less diverse. Uh, it is not who your, your residents are. It is who, the profile of who we expect to turn out in election profile would be. So, that's kind of a, an important component in here. Uh, you are, uh, uh, you look different as a community than this. Um, and you can see, uh, you know, how people took the survey, largely, you know, uh, largely at the phone and online, and how that kind of played out. Uh, and only two percent in Spanish. I know there's a lot of data, uh, and, uh, I'm happy to answer questions. And as I said, we are on Team Boulder for, you know, months and months to come. So, uh, if there's, uh, questions that we want to dive into more over time, uh, you know, we're here tomorrow, we're here the next day. We're, we're engaged.
Thanks so much for that, Adam. Uh, appreciate all the detail. I think we can all say that we're on Team Boulder, so glad to have you with us. Um, so I'll ask council, uh, for clarifying questions. I will note that we did put out a request to have questions sent out in advance. Nicole, thanks for sending those in. We could go down a rabbit hole and ask eighteen million questions, uh, but if we can keep it high level and only to those that are the most directly relevant to our discussion tonight, that would be great. That said, and who's, does anybody have one? See Tina, and then Mark.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation, and I just want to confirm that the, um, the CCRS tax extension at about a sixty percent approval is, is very likely to pass, just.
Uh, so, uh, you know, consultants are careful with their words. So, uh, I, I will, I will say, uh, and I think I characterize it here and, and in, in written form with staff. Uh, I, I think it, it puts you in a good position. Uh, and, and so, uh, m- my, um, expectation is that, uh, when you see numbers like that, again, I, I'm not directing things, but the idea that you would have a significant outreach component, speaking to your community and telling them about the dynamics here, uh, of what this could hap- what could happen with public, you know, that's really, you know, the, the, the fair and balanced way of talking about something that I expect the city attorney would, would appreciate. Um, doing that, uh, would put you, I think, in a, in a strong position for success.
Thanks.
Mark, and then Tara.
Um, what percentage of initiatives that poll as low as the public realm tax actually are put on a ballot? And what percentage of those succeed?
So, there's, there's a couple different schools of thought, and, and I'll, my answer will probably be a little longer than you want it to be. But there's one school of thought that says, um, you only put something on the ballot if you have the expectation and the, and that it will pass. And so, you know, as of this moment, there may be a recommendation that I would give if you asked me on that, um, based upon the idea that you want it to pass, uh, and you have a, 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 you know, that's your goal. There's another school of thought that says you put things on the ballot, even if you don't think it will pass, with the expectation that you may have to cut services dramatically or make a, a significant, uh, uh, you know, impression on the voters that this failed, and here are the consequences, and demonstrate those consequences. I'm not suggesting you're punishing anyone. I'm suggesting that you're looking at your budget and based upon the fact that it failed, making consequential decisions that, that are, are significant in the eyes of the voters. Um, so, so putting it on the ballot because you, you have the expectation it will succeed, or putting it on the ballot with the kind of uh, idea that it'll fail, and hopefully next time you'll have greater success. So, my answer is, um, there's, there's a muddy kind of an answer, because there's two schools of thought that might have you move forward with that. Um, if you're looking for success, uh, I would say a very small percentage of, uh, public agencies would take a forty-four percent yes, uh, you, you know, vote, uh, and put that on the ballot outside of a fiscal emergency, uh, or outside of, you know, some other extenuating circumstances.
My only other question. Could putting a, a low polling initiative on the ballot have an impact on one that is polling very high, such as CCRS?
Short answer is yes. Uh, I, I, I think there's absolutely a chance. Now, I, I don't have the, um, uh, y- you know, the statistic that says the exact correlation, but I, I think we can all collectively see if, if I am, uh, inclined to press no or, or fill in the no bubble uh, in one case, related to my city, uh, there, there may be a, a greater chance that I would fill in that same no bubble on another, uh, another measure related to my city. So, uh, I think just using some common sense outside of just the statistics would say yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Tara?
Hi. Um, I don't know if this is for Adam or for staff, but question on, in our packet, we discussed question sixteen. we discussed question sixteen, seventeen. One was with a sunset and one was without a sunset. It seemed like the text was exactly the same. So I was wondering if that was an error.
Yeah, I'll take it quick. That I will take responsibility for. Uh, I've um, there's a couple of things in this report that I want to have updated and we'll have a final version to staff uh moments after uh after this uh this call um for for final versions. And that will go into a report on results, which has not been delivered yet, which will have hundreds and hundreds of pages. So I appreciate that, pointing that out. And yes, we will, we'll make that clearer. But it was uh, in the survey itself, it had twenty-fifty as a sunset or extended permanently as the right language for that second uh.
So, right. And so in sixteen and seventeen, you saw that it was the same text, right? But it said with or without a a sunset. So was that a mistake? That that's my question.
Yeah, what I'm saying is in the reporting, uh, I I had the wrong text.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That's fine, that's fine.
Yeah.
Um, so then my question is, is can you remind us or me? If there was a big difference between the sun setting and not the sun setting, I mean, as a person, as an average Joe, I would say that once I'm paying the tax, I don't care if it's sunset or not. Plus, you know, there's a good chance I'll be dead at some point, and so it won't even matter at that point. But that's my gut is that it doesn't matter if it's sunset. It's better to just not sunset it because people don't care. Is that true or not true?
Well, uh, if we gave them a choice, uh, you know, I I think there's a a logic that says that. In the case of the poll, we gave half the voters the sun, the sunset and half the voters not. And there was a three or four point jump for the people who got the no sunset. Um, so what that says is if that was the will of the council, then, you know, that would probably be a more logical approach because it gives you more flexibility and.
No sunset would be.
No, no sunset would be.
Okay, thanks.
Flexibility, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so that's our questions. So um, then they, uh, city staff has questions for us. So the first one of which um, which we essentially just went through, which was, do we have questions? All right, so the second one is, do council members have clarifying questions on the ballot language? It was included within the polling survey of potential tax ballot measures. This is more specific, so I don't know if anybody has any extra questions on that topic specifically. And I'm seeing shaking heads. So that's what you all gave for us. Are you looking for direction from us about um what you want us, you, what we would like you to work on in terms of the next stage, in terms of bringing back ballot language? I'm getting a little nod from Charlotte.
Good evening, uh, council members, uh, Charlotte Husky, budget officer. Yes, that would be helpful for us and staff and our work with the city attorney's office and uh prepping for the ballot measures that are that are upcoming in in July.
I figured it just wasn't one of your questions to us. Okay, um, so yeah, let's, so let's wrap up this discussion by giving direction. We have on what we would like to see staff work on for the next ballot measure. I will say without putting my finger on my thumb on the scale that the um polling results may lead us to a pretty kind of obvious conclusion. So I don't know that we have to talk about this for a really long time, but if people want to give your quick thoughts, Tina, Taisha, Mark.
Yeah, I would just pursue the CCRS tax without a sunset. And I would think that uh staff in the polling could create the language that they think will work best.
Great, Taisha.
Yes, this is uh, just a general comment. And again, it is about our survey, our surveying technique uh methods for um underrepresented communities here. And so although I appreciate the efforts of the four hundred respondents, I have significant concerns that two percent of four hundred and eight people for black people and African Americans in our community, that is not sufficient. Similarly, with our Latino, Latina and Hispanic communities, of which six percent responded of four hundred, and that's twenty-four people. And so once again, we find ourselves with an overrepresentation of white respondents, uh, three hundred and twenty-eight people. And so my requests would be for the next round to do um just broader uh engagement of um our racially and ethnically or rather non-white residents and um community members so that we have an appropriate stretch. I have, as I said, I have no idea that those eight, what those eight people, where they, where do they live, are they linguistically different, are they African or African American? Um, again, I just, and I'm I'm sorry, Adam, this isn't a criticism of you specifically in your group. I actually was very happy to see um the racial and ethnic diversity of your staff. Um, and and um, so I know that that isn't the issue, but it is something that I've raised before around our community survey and just in general, our surveying techniques as it relates to making sure that they align with equitable research practices. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more area. And it was just a question about fire and police. And I would, I I had some concerns because in this town, we have obviously significant fire issues. And I just wonder if those, if that question was disaggregated, one saying fire and another saying police, if those numbers would have been different. Thank you.
And so you got Mark and then Matt.
Um, for me, I think this is a a pretty clear and easy decision. Uh, I believe we should uh pursue the CCRS extension without sunset. And I don't think this is the year for the public realm tax. I would be very um upset if if the public realm tax dragged down the CCRS uh approval. I think it's, it the the support for it is is way, way, way below what I've always understood is necessary to get a tax initiative passed. Um, I learned that from uh older and wiser members of council, well, maybe not older, but uh certainly wiser. And uh, I I just don't think we can go forward with that, at least this year. Uh, maybe another year, the conditions will be more conducive, but I don't want to jeopardize one for the other. Thank you.
And Mark, Matt, Tara, and then I'll go.
Uh, appreciate it. I I I'm gonna sort of stick with the theme here. I think the CCRS with no sunset is the obvious way to go. Um, and then I think tabling uh the public realm, you know, I have to go back and sort of say like, I I kind of saw that that was going to come. And I'd love to throw a bone to say that maybe if we're not doing it this year, the prudent decision going forward would be to first ask the voters to raise the cap of our self-limited mill levy uh request of voters before we ask to actually approve a tax. Um, so so that we actually can, if we do do that, we get more bang for the buck if that's indeed what the voters want. So the fact that we may not do that this year, I would like a rethink in terms of the order of operations, because I think there's a perhaps a more prudent way to go about doing that.
Tara.
I agree with um, yes, the CCRS no sunset and uh not the public realm tax. But I think it would would not be a bad idea, although I know we don't have time tonight, is to discuss what we should do like next year and what do the voters want? Is, do they want to see more constrained, um, more constraint on our parts before we touch property taxes? You know, there was a lot of very interesting things in that um assessment, one of which is people actually do like dedicated taxes. I took the poll myself, even though we wish they didn't, right? But they actually do. I took the poll myself and to me, it reminded me of getting to yes, the sales book getting to yes, because it was like, you believe this, right? And you believe that we shouldn't uh, we shouldn't dedicate taxes, right? And you believe this, right? And you want a tax, uh, property tax increase, right? And then they're like, no, even though they were yes, yes, yet uh, no. So I feel like it will be a great thing for us to really understand better what's going on because we're going to need something to help us. Um, so I'm hoping we can have that discussion sometime in the future.
Thanks, Tara. I'll call on myself and then Lauren and Nicole. Um, so just, I think we have consensus here, uh, which is CCRS without sunsetting and then no public realm, the polling points is there, I think, very clearly. So appreciate everybody's work to get us to this point and agree with folks on, we'll have to reconsider what next steps are, but I think that's for another day. So uh, Lauren, Nicole, your thoughts?
Um, I, yeah, agree, CCRS, no sunset. I would say while I agree that the public realm tax is unlikely to pass, I think that there can be benefits to running something, even if it is unlikely to pass, like Adam was speaking to. And I share the concern about that potentially bringing down the CCRS tax, but I would ha- um, and since we have our financial strategies committee people here weighing in, you know, I feel comfortable going with this and not bringing forward the public realm tax. But as part of how we think about all of these on the whole, I think that there could be a strategy in the future where we might end up running something that even if we believe it's unlikely to fa- pass, uh, either to try and get it to pass in the future or just as sort of a educational component, thanks.
Thanks, Nicole.
Um, yeah, uh, same. I I just, I had a question for uh Matt, actually. Uh, you were asking about about measure to raise the cap. I just wanted to make sure you weren't talking about that for this year, but that might be for something like a future thing.
Correct, yeah, just now that we have a chance to redo this, we could rethink our approach.
Yep, okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify. Um, and then, yes, to to everything everybody's been saying, um, I agree with Lauren on, you know, running things when uh they may not pass um can be a way of raising awareness. But to Mark's point, I don't want to drag down um the CCRS tax uh in that. And and I think too, with just all the um, everything we're doing with continued work on the long-term financial strategy and the great work that our uh both communications and finance department are doing, uh, we're going to get a a lot of the information that folks have been uh wanting more of in the next stage of this work um next year, which will focus on exploring some additional revenue sources, potentially um new, new taxes that we haven't thought of before. Um, I think we'll also get really good information out of the budget this fall. And um both the Fund Our Future project and the um, the budget cycle this year are very likely to help with educating the public on what our budget situation is and uh the the risks that we are facing and the prioritization that we're going to need uh to do. So I think we'll have a lot of what we need moving forward too. So anyway, appreciate the the consensus. Um, the numbers are pretty clear here.
Right, okay, Ryan, bring us home.
Emily, yeah, I I would say go forward with CCRS, no sunset, and then on the public realm tax, hold for now and just continue to invest in the work of the financial strategy, long-term financial strategies um committee and trying to better understand our opportunities and also how things look, you know, for the next year. Um, that's all, thanks.
Very good. Well, um, Charlotte and Krista, is there anything else that you need from us?
No, we have all we need. Thank you so much, counsel.
Yes, thank you.
Great, well, thanks to both of you and Adam. Thank you for joining us as well. And uh, with that, I'll bring this to the end of this agenda item. Which leaves us with just one more. Uh, Elisha, can you take us to six A, please?
Yes, sir, thank you. Six A is our last item on tonight's agenda, and it is matters from the mayor and members of council. And it is the discussion on methods to improve open comment.
Okay, great. Well, thanks um for taking us into this. Um, so Tina, I know this was your specific CAC request. Uh, I think it was an interest shared by a number of us. Um, so, but did you want to speak uh to it a little bit since this was your request?
Sure, um, thanks, but I I do think it was a shared interest. Uh, I'm interested in creating a a bit of a a healthier public comment environment and or open comment environment. I'm particularly looking for a more predictable timeframe so that we are no longer uh sometimes putting agenda items onto future meetings because we've run out of time because of public comment. And this has been um an issue with us completing our work that we had planned to do. And I think this is a significant issue and finds us where we are today, where we're hesitant about making changes to ordinances because we are getting a little bit backlogged. Um, and the other piece is to ensure that people who participate virtually and people who participate by email um feel heard as well as people who show up in person. I I personally um sometimes am concerned that people who are in person have an outsized voice and influence on our meetings. And I just want to make sure that we find a way to make sure that all people feel that they're, the way that they're participating is equally valued by us as council. So those are my goals.
Thanks, Tina. That was well said. Um, I will say I would have made that request if you hadn't. So thanks for for putting that forward with the similar ideas in in mind. And so uh, we did um put out a call for people to send in suggestions um about potential changes. And uh, people rose to that occasion and send in a number of different suggestions. So I'm thinking about having um each of us who did send in um a suggested change to maybe speak up for that changer changes. We can kind of work through them. Um, I know this is a topic that, you know, we all care about. It's been a challenging subject. Um, and we have a lot of suggestions, so maybe we can try to move through them relatively expeditiously, uh, but also give the time to discuss them. So um, I wonder if somebody would like to start by volunteering to speak up about a change that they suggested. Ryan.
Thank you. I just wanted to start partly because uh I had a a thought about goals that might hopefully help to frame things. But first, let me just say that uh, anything I say, I intend to keep uh to be content neutral. We're talking about open comment and we'll be looking to um Teresa, our city attorney, to help keep inside the boundaries of that. Um, and oh, and I should also say, just for for clarity for anybody following this, I read in, I think it was an op ed today, that we, that somebody said we made a decision to put um open comment online in June or July. We have not done that as far as I know. We, there was a single meeting, that there was a um, yeah, a hold on, but I just wanted to make sure that that's clear. Anybody can add to that if they like. But um, anyway, with that.
Ryan, do you mind if I just clarify just that?
Please.
That our meetings in um, this meeting and meetings in July are virtual because they're special meetings because of our council recess. So we have a few meetings that we are not having because of our council recess. And so the rest of the meetings are uh special meetings and it is our practice to make those virtual. So this was not done in response to anything else, to clarify. Thanks for mentioning that, Ryan.
Thanks, Aaron. Okay, so I just wanted to start by suggesting that uh however we proceed here, that it would be helpful to start with the goals, like what affirmatively are we trying to achieve? And I would propose two things. Uh, the first is that we um, okay, that we are seeking to reduce disruptions in open comment that delay and diminish the ability to conduct city business. And secondly, that we make, or we are making open comment more accessible and more inviting to everyone. So I would welcome amendments to those goals. Um, but I would just propose mostly that we start with what what are we affirmatively trying to achieve? So those are, those are my goals. And with that, I I had suggested in my hotline a a few. Um, I like the idea of of establishing a firm fixed end time for open comment rather than a fixed number of people who get to speak. Uh, we set it such that we target the time to match with, as we have had twenty speakers. Um, but if we run out of time, then we um, we're out of time, we move on. Um, I also like towards the goal of um, both goals, really, um, creating more parity with with speakers online. And I would suggest we consider alternating the online speaker versus the um, the in-person speaker. Uh, and then finally, I'm supportive, as many others have talked about, the um, the idea that we can speak um right away to hate hateful, inflammatory, dehumanizing, or the like speech. So I put those out there.
Great. And what I might suggest in terms of organizing is that maybe people can speak up for specific changes and then we'll have a list of changes and then maybe we can talk through um which one of those we might, which ones of those we might like to implement. So um, Ryan, I got you with the uh fixed length of open comment, um, the uh being able to respond at the time and then um also the alternating in-person virtual. Okay, uh, I got Mark, Tara and Nicole.
Uh, I agree with almost everything Ryan said. I would add one other goal, which is to promote the sense of safety uh that people are entitled to feel when they come to open comment and speak to their government. Um, I will, the only point of disagreement I have with Ryan is I'm a little troubled by uh setting a time limit. And if you don't get in under the time limit, you have to come back next week. Um, it seems to me I'm, we'd be better off setting a number, whether it's fifteen or ten or eighteen or twenty, um, and conducting pub open comment uh and allowing that number of people uh to. and conducting open comment and allowing that number of people to express themselves. I just think it's unfair if you're number eighteen out of twenty and we run out of time. You know, we're that's too much on the clock for me. I have consistently advocated for two things. One is stronger penalties for disruptive behavior. Because I I just think it's it's appropriate to to do that. And two, I have advocated for restricting open comment to items that are on our agenda or the previous agenda or the following agenda, because I think those that that gives us a focus on city business as opposed to anything else. I I I don't feel so strongly about it if if the will of council is that we want to let people excuse me, express themselves on any subject whatsoever, and we will deal with disruptive behavior as a separate category. But I I do think that restricting comment to you know, agenda items and 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 possibly broadening it to include other aspects of purely city business. So if somebody wants to talk about the renovation of South Boulder Rec Center, they can do so. But I am I am otherwise supportive of the things that that Ryan said with the exclusion of the setting a time limit as opposed to a person limit. I just think it's disrespectful to people who get knocked off the agenda and have to come back next week simply to express themselves to their government. I I just think that's that's a little harsh. And that's my thought.
Thank you, Mark. You got Tara, Nicole, Lauren, and I will go.
Just to add something to what Mark said, maybe to make it more palatable to city attorney, perhaps we could prioritize the city business. And then if there's extra speaking time speakers, like we can then add whatever you want to say to that. But to prioritize city business for me would be important. Specifically, like the, like he said, the agenda or whatever's going to happen in the next two weeks or however we decide to do it. But that's just my opinion about maybe how to make that a little bit better. And I'm not trying to change it. But my what I what I had proposed was to, instead of having comments to open comment at the end of the night, would be to bring it back to the end of open comment. So that when there are hateful remarks, we can deal with them quicker so that the community doesn't think that we are ignoring that. But I did want to limit it to thirty seconds per council, mostly thirty seconds. Because I don't want it to become like speeches or, you know, like a long thing. Just say your piece. This was disrespectful. This was racist. This was anti Semitic. And then, you know, it doesn't have to be long, just thirty seconds, so that also I don't want I don't want us to run out of time with our agenda. Okay.
Thanks, Tara. Nicole?
Yeah, so my my idea was just to have more predictability in the timing of the agenda items that come after open comment to, you know, kind of the comments that Tina started out with. Denver does this, and it seems more efficient from a time management perspective. I think we could allocate forty five minutes for open comment as we do now on the schedule. That's time for twenty people to speak for two minutes. And and Mark, just to your point, you know, I I definitely understand the feeling of not wanting to come back to things, right? If if you don't get to take your time because somebody took too long or something like that, or, you know, we didn't manage the meeting well or something, then I think it it is it is frustrating. Like, I I just want to acknowledge that 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 would be a frustrating thing, too. And we have had to do that recently when we haven't gotten to items on the agenda due to how long things have taken and had to, you know, punt them to a future meeting. And it doesn't feel great when when you prepare like that. I think, you know, we can have a prioritization scheme that fits in with that, where those who had signed up but didn't get time to speak at a given meeting have first priority at the next meeting. That way, and and then, you know, maybe those who haven't spoken at all in a given period could be next on the list, and those who have spoken before recently would be in the next batch. That's how Denver does this, and they don't seem to have issues there with people feeling unheard or frustrated. I think it's just a shift in mindset that and process that people, everybody would need to get used to. But I think it is something that that we could get used to and probably, you know, once we have confidence that, yep, it still fits in, you know, forty five minutes, most of the time we could potentially even give out, well, sorry, I'm saying we very loosely staff. When they're sending out lists of speaker lists, they could let people know, you know, generally we are able to get through everybody. But if you're, you know, in the last five people or something, you may be in the the batch that doesn't, you know, get called, you will have priority at the next meeting, something like that. And I think the other thing that might be important if we go this route is to make sure that if we do go a time based route is to intermix the virtual and in person, because otherwise I think what might happen is the people who would typically be at risk of getting bumped if folks are taking too long would be the virtual speakers. And that doesn't feel really fair to me either. So anyway, just some thoughts there. But but I do think that, you know, Denver's had a lot of success with their time based approach. We have forty five minutes versus their thirty. So I think that's a a space where we still have room to get through the typical number of people that we have, and we're not having to restrict numbers of of speakers.
Okay, thanks, Nicole. And so we're we're still collecting potential changes here. And I've got Taysha and Tina.
I don't have changes. I have comments. Be up for when that.
We'll come back to you. Tina, did you have a specific change?
Uh, yes. Basically, just what Nicole said and to make it more cohesive and parody in going between virtual and in person speakers, I would suggest the camera be off for the open comment period. So that it it's just it's it's there's more parity. That's it.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, then I'll I'll go ahead and go and address a suggestion that I put out there, which was to start the meeting a little bit earlier at five thirty. And so have open comment be its own section of the meeting. So we start at five thirty. Counsel's there, you know, the key staff members for open comment are there. We conduct open comment. I I would propose doing it audio only as as Tina just just mentioned. And then we do, we can work through the issues at the time. I would support Tara's suggestion of being able to have a a brief response at the end of open comment to address anything that we felt like was critical to respond to. Ryan mentioned that as as an idea as well. And I also support Nicole and Ryan and others' idea about having a fixed length. Because I think that one of the ways that open comment has been dysfunctional is that it has caused our meetings to go long and has caused the start time of agenda items to get really unpredictable, and it's caused agenda items to be postponed. And so I think if we start a little bit early, we have it in its own section, we have a fixed length, and then a short break, and then are able to start at a time certain. And I'm thinking six thirty potentially, then the people who attend the business meeting section of it will know exactly when that starts. And so that there can be predictability in scheduling there as well. And then also, if there are things that happen in open comment that would potentially make people feel unsafe in one way or the other, that that is for the people, the the nine of us, if you used to city staff member and the people at open comment, and not for everyone else who's attending or declarations or public hearing or things like that. So that's that's my suggestions about that start time, fixed length, break, and then start the rest of the business meeting at a time certain. Okay, I got while we're still collecting things, I got Matt and Lauren.
I appreciate that. I I just say it's music to my ears that we're gonna it looks like we're seeking to make substantive changes so that the status quo is not there. So I I appreciate that. I I like what I'm hearing. Erin, I appreciate what you're saying about start earlier. I can support that as well as the fixed timeline. I think that's good. You know, I think we're thinking about virtual and in person, I think for maybe ease of administering for, you know, Alicia and Emily, that maybe you do it in two or three chunks so that there's a little bit of a routine and it's predictable for all. It's like two or three in person, two or three virtual. And then it breaks things up because sometimes we get into a runaway of amplification of disruption based on it being in a particular place or format. In that sense, I think that's a helpful way to think about it. I I would also be interested in in maybe keeping some of what we, you know, some of the scope, you know, with with regards to, you know, what we're what city business that's happening either in that meeting or proceeding or subsequent. I do think that that helps us stay focused on the task at hand, which is important. So I so I could see that being quite relevant as well in the early stage of the stages of this. But anyway, I I like what I'm hearing, and I could support just about any combination of these things.
Thanks. Lauren?
Thanks. Do we have an opportunity at this point to ask questions about any of these or that's going to be later?
No, and 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 thanks for those comments, Matt, but I am I'm still trying to make sure we have the full list of ideas out on the table before we move to sort of the next phase of discussions. So Lauren, did you have another proposed change to put on the table?
Yeah, I I I shared your interest in seeing the meeting time changed and adjusted and having a break. I think one of the things I've also been thinking about is sort of what the response is to comments that violate our rules or contain hate speech. And I think for me, I feel like having the person who's running the meeting have a more immediate response directly after someone finishes speaking feels like the fastest way to address that. I will say that doesn't require a rule change, but also with some of the rule changes people are discussing in terms of having a set meeting time or having a set allocation of time for open comment that could be makes get a little complicated. And then, yeah, I have just had questions around how staff feels about some of these, how easy or hard they would be to implement from a staff perspective. Thanks.
Great. Thanks for that. Well, let me let me go ahead and list what I've got in roughly the order that they were proposed. And then maybe we could just ask if staff has any particular reactions or you you just feel like it's up to council to to discuss this. And so that what I've got on the table is a proposal for a fixed length for open comment of forty five minutes of alternating in person and virtual speakers, whether that's one by one or two by two or three by three. Stronger penalties for disruptive behavior. Restricting open comment to certain agenda items or potentially prioritizing comment on existing agenda items. And then responding to open comment at at the end of, so council members to be able to respond to open comment at the end of open comment, but maybe limit that to just thirty seconds per person. An early start time for open comment at five thirty with a break and then a fixed start time for the rest of the meeting of six thirty. And the final thing of having the presiding officer spawn respond more immediately to hateful or dehumanizing language. Lauren?
And then I think also whether it's audio only testimony or not.
Ryan, you got your hand. Did I miss anything else?
Yeah, I was just thinking the the question of of whether it's fixed is sort of, I think, first threshold, the fixed time. The second one is how much time does it take? For for example, I heard you say forty five minutes. I'm not a hundred percent sure that that is exactly how we would would consider the the time that we currently do. I know it's supposed to be forty five, but I think we build in an hour. So my my preference would be that we keep it to be planned for the the same duration. So I'd maybe look to staff. Is that is like fifty or fifty five minutes more like what is normal? Or is it sixty minutes? Or sorry, Erin, you're 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 serving meeting. Sorry, I'm just, that's my thought process.
Well, what I what I'd like to do next, if you don't mind, is turn to city staff and say, do you have any input on what I just described? This is just a council discussion.
I think we've made, I got distracted, so I want to just add one more thing, maybe that did you add, and I'm not sure if you said this or not, did you add Nicole's bringing people back? Like the next week?
Did not. So let's let's make sure that's part of it. That would be, I think, part of the forty five, having it at a fixed length is giving priority.
For me, that that is a crucial part of it so that people don't feel, you know, like left out.
Thanks.
Mayor, to your question about whether or not any of these suggestions are doable, from a staff perspective, they can be. I guess the the biggest one we would think about is the alternated, we'll get in person and virtual. And while we don't need to get into the process right now, I know that our amazing clerks team would be thinking about a process in which we would take speaker sign up, do our randomization process, and then figure that out as we think about notification. But could we do that? We could as we move that forward. But certainly, we would look to all of the suggestions as to the will of council. But are they doable? Yes.
Teresa?
Yes, I the vast majority of these suggestions are within council authority. The length of suspensions is within the city manager's sound discretion and is not a council decision, but is instead a a city manager and legal determination of of what is a appropriate and permissible amount of time for suspension. So I would suggest you all take that one off the table.
Okay, I was actually, I was going to ask about that. So thanks for clarifying that. So that is not up to us. That is up to the city manager. So we will mark with all due respect, we'll strike that on the list for jurisdictional reasons. Okay, so so it's now, I think it's our time to figure out which of any of these we would like to pursue.
Sorry, I pointed Mayor, I did have a question for.
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify on the question about limiting the topics to an agenda item. Wouldn't that be a content issue?
Yeah, council member Adams, thanks for the question. That that would be a content based restriction in a limited public forum. We could potentially do that. What I would caution this council about is that related to city business is quite a broad definition. And so could you limit to things that are on the current agenda? Or the immediately past or or forthcoming agenda? I I believe you could do that. If we are asserting that we're a limited public forum.
Okay, so there there may be some some challenges with with that one in one way or another. That's that's helpful to understand. Okay. And so anyway, so
And Erin, mine was also a question for staff.
Okay, go ahead.
For me, I just, again, wanted to ask the trade off question. We've got a long list of things here. I certainly expect that some of the details of how speakers are assigned and how we switch back and forth between virtual and in person, that that's really more in the operational domain. So I don't want to weigh in there too much, right? I think the so so as we're going through this, Erin, I just I I would like us to not kind of get into operations and let staff figure out operations, but just thinking about, you know, the general, general thing we're aiming for. But my question is, as before, with the ordinances that that we just passed. What's the trade off here, staff? Because changes don't often just come out of the blue with with all the, you know, spare time you don't have. So just curious about that. And if there are any of these changes that would be more require more work than others.
Teresa, I leave some of that to you because we we would have to come with some of these with some rule changes. So a lot of this will have to be drafted. Certainly, I will say the clerks team would have to, if there are changes to how speakers are selected and the randomization process. I have full faith in our amazing clerks team to be able to figure that out. And we would have to, we would have to think if that is your direction about, A, the process, and then how do we notify folks in time for whenever that next meeting is? But certainly, we will take that offline and do some of that. If it it and again, it depends on the changes. If the ask and the will of council is, for example, to only broadcast audio and not video, that is a very To uh only broadcast audio and not video, that is a very simple. Change, it would need to be in the rules, so Teresa would have to change uh do some writing in that, but from an operational standpoint, that is a simple. Uh, lift, it is just something, so a lot of this lift and Teresa, I look to you, uh, there will be some writing involved. Um, so uh I will pass the baton on to you.
Thank you, um, the. You know, it's gonna depend on the number of changes that council wants, whether they are procedural or whether they relate to the code as well. Um. I stand, I stand ready to to do the will of council.
And can I call a quick on that? Would, is it possible that there might also be some gains? For you in time, uh, if you're managing some of these issues less?
Hmm. Um.
I I would say this, and I'll start, Teresa, so the question is. Certainly that the. Disruptions in at council meetings has taken staff time. Um, at whether that is increased recesses or frankly. These conversations take time at meetings uh as we think about them, right? So all of it takes time. Um, and the and if there are. Changes that will enable us to save time in the future, then that is a good trade off. So certainly there will be some time that Teresa may spend now that we can save uh in the future, so. Again, to the time that we take now, there will be perhaps some gains in the future, but all of it will depend on what you decide tonight. Is that? Fair enough, Teresa?
Sounds good to me.
Would you let us know as we are going through if there are any that you're like, you guys are gonna have to potentially risk something else? Um, if we do this? Sort of like what the what I asked for in the other one?
Yes.
Aaron, can I I ask a quick question to staff? About limited pub? Can you tell me, oh, as far as li- doing limited public forum, which is how you said that we could limit? Uh, how hard is that and how time can, would it take a long time and is it hard? And do you have? Do you, are you against? I mean, how do you feel about it?
It's not up to me, if that would be a court determination. Um. I would. Point previous legal advice. Um, that I cannot discuss publicly.
Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot with the legal advice, Teresa, so, but so. Appreciate the question, Tara. Okay, before, and here's what I'm thinking is that we can. Move through the consideration of these specific items and then we can wrap up and people can offer general comments. Taysha, I don't want to make sure that we get to your comments. Uh, but I'm also, I'm trying to work through the procedure, but Taysha, if you don't mind, we'll we'll work through it and then we'll come, we'll come to you. The one thing I um, the other thing that did get called out, one of them was the presiding officer having an immediate response to hateful language and. Um, I don't believe that's a rules change, is that correct, Teresa?
That's correct, um, that is a point of privilege that the chair holds.
So what I might say, Lauren, to that suggestion, I think it it has a lot of merit, and so I. As the most common presiding officer, I is can certainly say with um the assistance of my council members to help. Me think through which are the things that really need to be responded to immediately, I'm certainly willing to. Undertake that and respond immediately when that does happen to the best of my discernment and ability, so. Um, and if other people, Lauren, you're the next most likely person to preside, so you could give yourself that direction. Um, but I it would that be sufficient for that item? I've got a nod from Lauren.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I was interested in seeing if other people were. Interested in us making that change. But we could also just do it, it's fine.
I'll still just straw poll it, just just to, because if everybody thinks it's a terrible idea, then maybe I shouldn't um shouldn't do it, so. Okay, then I'm I'm about ready to move forward in the order that we were given them, but um Nicole, you got a further thought?
Yeah, just on on that one too, I believe it's consistent with our rules of procedure that any one of us can um kind of speak up with a point of order at any time. So if there is anything, right, and we are not able to convey, it's any of us could also just do point of order. Um. As well, so I I mean, I don't hope we wouldn't start doing that all the time, but you know, I I trust Aaron that you've got, you've got this and. On the chance that um something is missed, we we can interject that way. So supportive basically of of that option.
Thanks. Um, okay, so all right, give me one second. Just my dear spouse just brought me a little extra water here to finish out the discussion. Okay, so uh we'll we'll straw poll here, and I realize that some of these have synergies with each other, but um we can correct that if that seems to go wrong by the end. The first item is. Uh, having open comment be a fixed length of forty five minutes, but giving priority to people who are missed to be at the top of the order for the next open comment. All in favor of that idea, raise your physical hand. Three, four, five, six, seven. I got seven. Ryan, did you want to throw in a comment?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I'm sorry if I missed the back and forth on this, but I'm I'm interested in the fixed timeline, but I wasn't sure about the forty five minutes, I just I still had a question like, should that be? Up to an hour, but.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, you did uh weigh in on the what it should be, but I'll I'll just say this, Ryan, maybe what I'll do is I'll poll next. Um, about the the early start time and the fixed uh resumption time, because I think that feeds into that question. Is that all right?
Fine. Thanks.
So. So the next one that since Ryan raised that is uh the proposal to have early start time at five thirty. With a then a short break and a resumption at um six thirty. Uh. Time certain, all in favor, raise your hand, physical hand. Three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Okay. Um, so that that has eight supporters, and then so what I might say, Ryan, is is the, we would have to. Have an amount of time that would work for us to be able to come back at six thirty. So that would just be my concern about pushing later than forty five minutes, but. Let me.
If you don't mind, Aaron, I just, I mean, I'm voting on the the principle that open comment is is planned to continue. To be on average probabilistically, the same amount of time that we currently plan it for, so. My vote is based on asking staff like, you know, what is that time? And if we have to come back at six thirty seven or. Yeah, whatever, like, that's fine too, but to me, I think just that there's a principle of like keeping open comment to be planned to be the same amount of time, that's my hope.
Can can folks remind me when we have on the agenda, how how many minutes do we allocate for open comment? I've seen it a million times, but I just want to confirm.
They always allocate sixty minutes.
Yeah, E, can you tell me, but I think it's uh it's an hour, but I think it's um twenty people times two minutes.
It's twenty people times two minutes, but the code allocates uh sixty minutes.
Got it, okay, well.
I think the code allocated, but that's what we've always, maybe Teresa's checking that, but we've always allocated an hour. And it's two minutes per person for sixty men, I mean, for twenty people.
So code allocates just number of people who can speak, but just time wise, oh, sorry, other way around.
Yeah, no, let me. Hey, everybody, I got it.
Okay.
The code specifies both twenty people. And forty five minutes. And so it would be helpful to have. If you're gonna impose a time limit, to just impose the time limit because. So for example, one person speaks. The meeting is disrupted, the meeting is recessed. It, if you're looking to impose a time limit, I would not include a number of people. I would simply impose the time limit. The current time limit imposed is forty five minutes, we've not been disciplined or diligent about that.
So, I mean, we can, it is possible to change those things, but it is currently at at forty five minutes in terms of our practice and written down. So. Ri- Ryan, do you want us to straw poll about sticking with the forty five minutes that's written down or?
I know, it's fine, I think I think that answers the question that the current practice is forty five, that assumes twenty people. My concern was just that I wouldn't want us to. Do something where suddenly we realize, oh, we only expect to have time for fourteen people, but what I'm hearing is we are, we currently plan to have twenty people in forty five minutes. Uh, there's a little bit of little time in there, I guess, but um. Now with the rededication to to being on time, it I think that that's fine, I mean, that works.
Thanks. Um, Tina?
Yeah, just a quick question, sometimes we actually don't fill up our whole open comment time, and so we continue our meeting. In this scenario, would we always start our business meeting at six thirty?
That's my proposal, yes, because I think we need certainty for people who are attending the business meeting, so if we actually end at, you know. Six oh five, there's just a longer break.
That sounds great, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thanks. Um, okay, the next one is um alternating in person and virtual speakers, and I think we could leave the details of the number of people in each alternation to our fantastic city clerk team. But who is in favor of doing that alternation between in person and virtual, raise your physical hand? I got nine on this one. Okay? People like that? Um, and then there is the restricting open comment to cer- certain agenda eyes items or potentially prioritizing speaking to certain agenda. Uh, items on the agenda. Um, and we've had some discussion on this, so I'll just ask people to raise their hand if they would like to pursue this option. I got three on that one. All right, and now we have the um resp- at the end of open open comment speakers. Uh, allowing council members to respond with a maximum of thirty seconds per response. All in favor, raise your hand. I got one, two, three, four, five, six on this one. Um. Then there is the does council support the presiding officer um uh doing an immediate response to hateful or dehumanizing language or potentially a council member with a point of order? All, if you like, that would be good to do, raise your hand. I got nine on that one. And the last one is having um it be audio only. So all in favor of that option? I got. S- s- five, I got five on that. Those were the ideas, so um. It sounds like we were supportive of um all of them except for the. Speaking only to agenda items. Teresa, does that give you what you need?
Hmm, uh, Mayor, can I? Uh, can I just? Repeat back what I heard?
Yes.
And then ask a clarifying question. So open comment would be limited to forty five minutes. And prioritize people who didn't get to speak. Um, because of the cutoff. Because they signed up for a particular meeting and the cutoff. Um, meant that they didn't get to speak. The next is to start at five thirty. Then recess until six thirty to start the business meeting at that time certain. The next is alternating in person and virtual speakers. The next is allow council members to respond. Immediately following open comment. And I'm sorry, what was the time limit on that?
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Um, and then not a rule change, but that the chair will immediately respond to hate speech um or other council members will. Um, take a point of order. So my clarifying question is this.
And also audio only.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that one. Podcast, okay, thank you, um. So my clarifying question goes to. So currently. We have a limited number of speakers and a limited time. If we have a rolling list of people. So say a hundred people sign up for open comment. And twenty get to speak. Does that mean that then the remaining eighty get priority for all of the remaining meetings? Is that what you all are actually asking for?
What I would suggest is that we would accept a maximum number of registrations that you could fit within forty five minutes.
And would you like that maximum number of registrations to remain at twenty people?
It probably makes sense, because there's always a few seconds in between speakers, so twenty is probably your your theoretical maximum.
Mayor, would you like to poll on that?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Uh, we've got some hands raised, but it just per Teresa's request, if we could just poll on continuing to allow twenty. People to be selected per open comment period. All in favor, raise your hand.
Does that mean other people wouldn't, ah, I I guess I don't understand how the prioritization would work.
So so here, I mean, in. In part, I think to to Nicole's earlier point, we can leave operational details to our amazing clerk team. Um, but I think, you know, something to the effect of, you know, twenty people are allowed to sign up. If any of them do not in fact get to speak, then they become the top priority for the next one, so if there were three, then you probably only take seventeen new signups.
And when you say only twenty people are allowed to sign up, what you mean is that we would. Do sign up the way we normally do and then prioritize twenty people from. That list of people who apply.
I I think so.
Not that we would like close. Applications for open comment at the first twenty.
Correct, that we would keep other procedures the same, including the randomization.
Correct, the way we do it currently is no matter how many people sign up, they are then randomized. The first twenty are selected as speakers. Be they virtual or in person. The remaining are not selected to speak at the current meeting.
Good, and I I've got Nicole and Tina's hand up, but Nuri, I saw your hand earlier, did you want to add something?
I I think Teresa got to it for the immediate list, I and the randomization, I think we're clear there. My additional question would be. Uh, do we continue to do a rolling list uh as as folks, but. I I think the answer is no, um, as we move forward, but. I want to get through all your questions first.
So, but Nicole and Tina.
Yeah, thanks, I just um had a couple of follow up questions, so um. If open comment is kind of set at forty five minutes. And we have potentially thirty seconds um each to speak at the end, is that part of that forty five minutes? Is that extra? How is that? How does that play out? It's part of the forty five minutes, so then we would just need to um, I I mean, maybe a flag for you. Um, or Lauren or whoever's facilitating the meeting that we're gonna have some comments or something so that you know.
So, well, I just, Teresa, you're nodding, but I I just want to counterpoint to that, because the the amount of time for our responses is uncertain, it could be up to five minutes, right? If we all took seconds plus a little space in between. So I I think cutting five minutes off of every meeting, you know, then then forty minutes for people to talk, so I might suggest that our responses be flex time afterwards. Um, rather than part of the forty five minutes, that that would be my suggestion, forty five minutes for people to speak to us. Then we have up to thirty seconds if we need to, probably most of the time we won't. And that cuts into the break if we do, that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so that was one of my clarifications, thank you, that's helpful, and then um the other one is that. I just want to confirm, we still have the rule that we've had for many years now, that people who've spoken at the prior meeting, the immediately prior meeting. Are kind of deprioritized if we have, you know, twenty. Plus signups, um, and that's that's still there? That's something that we're changing, like, anyway, just wanted to see where that's at. You could not ask for that to be changed. Yeah, so so that will still be in place. Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, so that that works through that, then I want to pause and give folks, if if people I know Taysha has something that she wants to say, and if anybody else wants to offer some final comments, um, we can. Um, just so Taysha can have. The floor and just get it keeping saying to all of us to keep in mind that we're close to ten o'clock.
Of course, and I don't have all that much to say, it's more so just, you know. In my opinion, public comment is a part of of our city's business. Uh, um, and so I'm disappointed that there is this false sense of separation. Um, I do not equate public comment to receiving emails from the public. Because in that sense, um, those emails only come to council members uh and city staff. Um, versus public comment, which is uh much more open and allows for other community members to hear. Um, what community members are raising and issues like, um, you know, the exceeding profit margins of Excel when Leslie comes and talks about that. And it's not on the agenda, that reminds us and it also educates our public around topics and issues that are coming up. Um, I was grateful that we did not vote uh to limit I agenda items and content. Um, so thank you for for not passing that, um, and then I just wanted to lift up my. Um, and then I just wanted to lift up my concerns at a five thirty start time, recognizing that this disproportionately impacts full-time workers from nine to five, um, low-income workers, um, so allowing them only thirty minutes to potentially get across town um is, in my my opinion, discriminatory and and so um, I'm I'm disappointed, but hopeful that um people can find their way to to get eh to be able to get here. Um, I also honor that public comment tends to be one of the times where we get to hear from underrepresented groups that do not have proportional represented representation on council, on staff, um, on our boards and commissions, um, and so again, recognizing that um public comment is more than um, or or you know, and I'm open, it's it's more than what is on the agenda. Um, and it is, it is inclusive of all city business, which is my understanding, um, business that we um, anything that we are authorized and have the authority to weigh in on is technically city business, so I'm grateful that we still have um, the freedoms and for our public to be able to speak to anything that we have the authority to have action on. Um, and again, and and concerned and disappointed by the five thirty start time, thank you.
Can I clarify something, just a little colloquy clarification? Uh, Taysha, you 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 interchanged open comment and public comment a few times, were you specifically referring to open?
Um, um, as I am specifically um speaking to the topic that we've been talking about.
Open comment. Appreciate it, thanks. Thanks for that. Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands raised, so just confirming again, Nury and Teresa, you've got what you need uh to go to the next step here.
We do, thank you.
Very good. Um, well, in that case, that concludes our final agenda item. Um, so you at least should, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we're done.
No, sir, that's a wrap.
Okay, well, thanks, everybody, I'll gather this closed here at nine forty-seven P M.
Thanks, sir.
Thanks.